Okay, it's nine thirty-two. So we will call the October third, twenty twenty-two Volusia County Council Meeting to In light of what just happened, what we all just went through, it's good to see you all here. Glad to hear the reports that I got this morning that everybody did well. As you know, some people in the community did not do so well. So we will start off today. Just a moment, I'll ask you to stand for an invocation, and then we will go directly to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that, if you care to. If the invocation is open to any faith group in the county, if you would like to participate in that, please just send an email to kgreen@volusia.org. That's K Green over there, Carissa, and she will get you set up. The, this morning, this morning, we have the Reverend Dr. C. Don McDonald from Episcopal Church of the Holy Presence, who will be leading us in the invocation. If you would care to stand, please do.
Good morning. Many churches in the United States are now celebrating Day of Saint Francis. It's the Feast of Saint Francis, and as many of you may know, Saint Francis is the Catholic patron saint for animals and environment. So I think it's appropriate today for us. Just allow me to read a couple of verses from First Corinthians. Saint Francis lived a life of love for people and animals and for creation itself. Love is patient and kind. Love does not envy or boast; it is not arrogant or rude; it does not insist on its own way. It is not irritable or resentful; it does not rejoice at wrongdoing, but rejoices with the truth. Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Let us pray. God of wisdom, you are the source of wisdom. We seek your help today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us. Give those here clarity, so that they can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. We ask for productive discussions guided by your wisdom that will broaden each one's perspective and lead to effective and decisive decisions. Thank you for their useful work and responsibilities. And so we beg you, that in the spirit of Saint Francis' prayer, abide today, this morning, in this meeting, we pray. Lord, make us channels of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy. Lord, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive; it is in pardoning that we are pardoned; and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. And may the Lord bless you and keep you, and may the Lord cause his face to shine upon you and be gracious to you, and may the Lord fill your, lift up his countenance towards you and give you peace, and the blessing of God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit be upon you all today.
Hi, United States of America, the Republic, the nation, God, the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Carissa, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Wheeler?
Here.
Ms. Gertman?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Lowry?
Here.
Ms. Post?
Here.
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Brower?
Here. And do you have a list for me? Thank you. Okay, we will start the meeting, we always do, with public comments. So I'll just call them in the order that I was, they were handed to me. The first, and when you come up, let me just give you a little direction, because it's a little different this morning. We have a, the monitor is out on the podium here. So when I call your name, just come to the podium, make sure that one of the microphones is, is close to you, so that everybody here can hear you, but also, this is broadcast live. Not that that should scare you. It's only, you know, thousands of people listening to you. So there won't be a timer on there. You will have three minutes on the, the big screen over my head. You will see, I think in red, the time, and there'll be a gentle sound at the end of three minutes to let you know it was there. So when you come up, just tell us where you're from, and then go right into your, to your comment. First, we have Zane, is it Urtell?
It is.
And you're coming up.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Zane Urtell. I am with the State of Florida CFO, Jimmy Patronas. For those of you who don't know, we are the insurance end of the state. So after hurricane comes, there's so much damage. I know everyone's in recovery mode right now, but one thing to be aware of is scammers. There's going to be people knocking on your door every day, trying to fix your house, getting you to sign something. Don't do that. Make sure that your residents know to call their insurance company and call their insurance agent, so they don't get scammed. Additionally, one more thing for you all, I'm going to be quick here. We have the Consumer Helpline for anyone that has an insurance claim. So it's one eight seven seven six nine three five two three six. If anyone's having issues with their insurance companies, feel free to have them reach out. I'll also give you my direct cell, it's eight five zero five zero eight thirty-one forty-eight. I'm happy to help out in any way at all, and best of luck with recovery, and thank you all for having me. Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
The Consumer Helpline is one eight seven seven six nine three five two three six.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all for having me. Best of luck.
Okay, next, we have, is it Asteed? Pardon? Jackson. Astrid Jackson, from Orange City.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I am Astrid Jackson. I live in Volusia County in Orange City. I'm one of the outfitters that is affected by what is happening at French Landing. I've actually, with me, Jennifer Brown with Paddle Adventures, and she is another outfitter that is affected by this. So what is happening is that in two weeks before August, we were notified, actually, that we were not allowed to do any tours out of French Landing anymore. People, we have been doing tours for fifteen years there, and it never was a problem. We're doing small equal tours, and suddenly, we're not allowed to do this anymore. We had to cancel several tours, and actually, what was interesting, the people ended up coming back, doing other tours with us, because they weren't, they could not get any tour through the concessionaire, which is concerned, which is considered to be the only allowed outfitter that is supposed to work there. This outfitter, the concessionaire, is an out-of-state, big corporation that won the, the bid to work out of the state park of Blue Spring, and they don't want any other outfitters to do anything there. They have like two hundred fifty other places where they're in parks. They also just acquired the concessionaire in De Leon Springs. And so this is a big problem for all of us, small businesses that are working here locally. I think one of the big problems is, the French Landing is a very special piece of land, because it is actually, it was deeded from Volusia County to the state in nineteen seventy-nine, under the condition that it has to remain open twenty-four, twenty-four hours a day at no charge to the public. In nineteen eighty-seven, an amendment was added that would allow them to start charging upon completion of a very specific set of improvements that are outlined in the amendment. Now, when, when, when contacting the DEP, their reply is that this condition is only valid for non-commercial users, but the state does, but the DEP does not distinguish between commercial, non-commercial, or otherwise. So I do believe that the state is actually in breach of the contract, at which point the Volusia County could really get the land back. I do think that Volusia County is very much affected by this as well, because we have been bringing in a lot of money to the state, tax monies, and also all the other business that we're bringing in. So I do think that Volusia County should have a big interest in this as well. Thank you. I think my three minutes are up.
You had two seconds to spare. Well done. Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I have all your contact information. I'd like to follow up with you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Very well done. This council supports local business. Paul Richardson.
All right. Good morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson of Malan. Coastcar rescuer, swimmer Zach Russ, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, who has exploited and rescued people in the aftermath hurricane, I, Ian, was personally thanked by President Biden. Abroad to the vaccine mandate, which is, which this council roundly rejected, will be discharged in the coming months. I asked this council to personally invite this hero to work and live with the county. I will email the, the gentleman's name to you and to Dorsey, if you can get that information. But what I really came here to talk about is, per a source, Juan Ariel Moila Salas, who was charged in the fatal hit-and-run of Pinellas County Deputy Michael Artwig on September twenty-second, is in the U.S. illegally. The sheriff says he crossed into Eagle Pass, Texas, and was expelled, expelled back to Mexico. At some point, he crossed again without capture. The local sheriff also reported that Juan was using a fake name, and that one of the construction workers helped conceal evidence by hiding it in the woods, while other workers, also in the U.S. illegally, gave misleading statements to NIDs to law enforcement. For the second time in less than two years, the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office is warning the loss of a deputy. Now, I'm not looking for statements or about illegal immigration or something like that, but last meeting, you guys approved a, a plan to renovate the Volusia County fairgrounds. And I hope that those taxpayer dollar monies that we got from the stimulus money will also be applied for E-verified. I don't know if you guys will have that stipulated, but if, if it doesn't, it needs to be included, because human trafficking is a big problem, and especially with the Biden administration, who does not want to close the border or enforce immigration laws, we're going to get more, more and more of these illegal immigrants into the country. So consider, I don't know if that's in the plan for the, for the fairgrounds or for any future projects going forward, for E-verified, at the very least, minimum. So consider that, and I hope that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. Before you all forget that there was a hurricane last week, a couple reminders. So when we had Matthew, I vacated the area for Gainesville, so the easiest route was up forty. Unfortunately, you got to the outskirts of Ormond, and you stopped dead, all right? The line was maybe five miles long to the border at Volusia County. The problem was, at Barbourville, there's a light, and it goes twenty seconds one way, twenty seconds the next way. Twenty seconds this one, twenty seconds. So to have one or two cars go through in twenty seconds is not a problem. To have four or five thousand cars go through in twenty seconds, it's a, a problem. So I'm told that I have to go to the county to ask the county, if there's a hurricane, please change that light, because the traffic on Granada during an evacuation is really going to be much more than the evacuation out of Barbourville. So please ask the staff to do that. Secondly, the bridge at ninety-two, I hope it's on the agenda, because that's one of the evacuation routes. Okay, remember, I've asked to widen that? Remember LPGA? I asked ten years ago, and it never got done, it's going to get done, kind of thing? It's also very important. Trees, my neighborhood, the large trees, like dominoes, all over the place, they're huge. It takes a hundred years to get that canopy back. So I'm asking you, when we have projects, to think about the loss of canopy throughout the state, Volusia County. We have a huge section in the middle. We're devastating the areas in which we develop. It's going to happen. You have to have the trees out to put the buildings in, but let's put the trees back in where we can. French Landing came up. When we went through the beach concessionaires, remember, it was a local versus outsiders? This is again a problem. We have to look at that, because we're accustomed to a certain lifestyle here, and I know it's got to change, but unintended consequences, they're, they're losing their, their jobs. And it's that uniqueness that makes us enjoyable. When they come down here, they don't want to see the same old, same old that they've seen everywhere else. They want to see something different. But I would ask you to look at that, if you could, and you're doing the beach approaches? We're devastating the sand dunes. They're doing one up by Bel Air Plaza. They just finished one at the Plaza roadway. They take all the sand dune out and replace it. So there's no sand left at the beach approaches. And I'm sorry, when you go to a beach, you expect to see sand, and to put all that cement in, and take all the less vegetation out, doesn't make sense to me. So I'm asking you to look again, that our beach approaches are lush and native plants. Thank you.
I think, Billy, from the pictures you showed me this morning, the hurricane did a pretty good job with the sand on, on the beach, and the sand dunes are no longer there. So that ends public participation. Public is invited to speak on items as we move through the agenda. This brings us to item one, the consent agenda, and I'll ask the council if anyone has an item they would like to pull for discussion or a vote. Heather Post?
Yes. F. Foxtrot, just for discussion.
F?
F.
Okay. I'd also wanted to pull F for discussion. I would also like to have it pulled for a vote. So we'll pull that out of the agenda. Anything else to be?
Mr. Chair, I also did want to know on item G, the correct dates for Fire Prevention Week are October ninth to the fifteenth, not October second to the ninth.
Thank you for that clarification, ninth through fifteenth, fire prevention, and I'm sure that'll be on the, on the website, and, oh, thank you. Anything else to be pulled?
Approval for consent agenda, including F.
Motion to approve by Lowry. Is there a second? Second by Wheeler on approving the consent agenda except for item F. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and if we could move to item F, Mr. Irvin.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Item F is a final plat for the Verona Villas portion of the project. It's a development on the beachside of Ormond Beach in Ormond by the Sea. The plat is for eighteen-town home lots and three single-family lots. This project was previously approved, using, utilizing this zoning that was in place. It was subsequently purchased, rezoned to PUD. Majority of the single-family have been developed. This is the final portion of the project pertaining to townhomes that are affronting on A-1A.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Heather?
I'll let you start.
I would like for us to, I know this has been previously approved. We just went through a week of intensive flooding, and I know the response is going to be, it's a five-hundred-year flood. I hear that, I've heard that for two years. I've heard it in Kickleyter and Lake Helen, that it's, you know, it's unusual rains, and yet, they flood with every, every rain that we get. We see it all over the county, flooding happening. I, I cannot, in good conscience, vote to approve another single development until, I think we need to pause and consider how we're growing. One of the things, if you look at this item on the second page, it says the, the streets will be dedicated to and maintained by the county. Well, I'm sorry, we don't need that dedication. We can't afford it anymore. We can't keep up with the maintenance that we already have in the county. There's not enough money. And so we keep approving these developments and adding that maintenance to the maintenance list for money that we don't have. We need to be taking care of the residents that we have here and their maintenance problems. Every one of us has probably received emails through this storm about unpassable roads, potholes. That's where we need to start. But more importantly, is that this is right on A-1A, and I, I can't, in good conscience, vote for another single development, give any approval in any way, until we pause and look at how we control our water, what's causing flooding. I know rains, I know storms, but we have, we have flooding all the time now, in all parts of the county. We need to, to look at it, come to a conclusion of how we do these developments, instead of packing the maximum amount of, of homes into an area and removing all the permeable ground. That's a big part of our problem, is that we're paving over our permeable ground, and there's nowhere for the, nowhere for the water to go. Weeds, we need to stop, we need to pause, and we need to reconsider this. So I'm, I'm going to vote against this. I urge the council to vote against it, and we can, we can bring it back and reconsider it, once we know what's happening. This is right on A-1A, and I think it's a, we're creating a problem, just like in the development and on forty-four and ninety-five, that's now flooded. Heather Post?
Do you have any comment, Clay? Do you have any comment?
Well, the, the, the simple fact is this, this is not the point in time that we can deny the project, unfortunately.
Why is it here for a vote, then?
Because state law requires that county council approve a final plat.
Does the state law require us to vote yes?
It meets all your requirements. There's a standard that if it meets your requirements, and it's in compliance with all of your land development regulations, you have to approve something that complies. And I'll let the attorney speak to that, but that's been the standard practice for these final subdivision plats. You go through the land use, you go through the zoning, you go through the preliminary plat, and then the final plat is a technical application of your code, which requires the public rights of, it requires the stormwater requirements. All of those have been through our process and have been reviewed by your staff to ensure compliance with your regulations that you have in place. If you want to change the regulations, you can do so, but you can't do so to projects that are already in process and are basically through the entire process and under construction.
Well, then, I don't understand why it's here for, for a vote. I understand that these come to us all the time, it's, everything's compliant, we're told everything's good, and then we get flooding. Then we get all the problems that we have to deal with, that every taxpayer in the county is paying for the problems that are created by these developments. So, Paula?
And as Clay pointed out, it's, it's here for the vote of the council, because the state statute requires that all plats be approved by the local government and pursuant to law. It is more or less a ministerial approval.
It's just check in the box.
Unfortunately, yes. That is, that is literally what the case law has, has stated. The approval of the plat is strict compliance with the, the land development criteria and the technical applications. It's unlike with a rezoning, where you can kind of look at compatibility and take into account other intrinsic evidence. Here, it is literally check the box, and then if they check the box, you have to approve it. That's, that's why it's kind of on the consent. Think of it more like a building permit for the land, rather than something where entitlement, you are looking at entitlements. Here, the entitlements have, have been given, you're, you are basically approving the technical compliance with the codes that you have approved, which includes that all lots front on a paved public road, which is why there's a required dedication to the public.
So my, my question is, first, I just wanted to point out that it's more checking the box, which I see too often in, in government, and certainly on the dais. But I was looking at the development, it says, we always fall back on as well, that, you know, it was approved by, we checked the box, right? It was approved by PLDRC, it was approved by Development Review Committee, it was approved by yada, yada, yada. And then we always say, well, it was approved by all these other people, so why should we even really discuss it? We should just go on the approvals of all the approvals. But I'm looking at the Development Review Committee, which, when I looked that up, that basically consisted of Clay and John and Julie, which is our former Public Works Director. So our Development Review Committee is two members of our staff, or three members, three members of the staff?
Three members of staff.
I couldn't remember the third. Airport, oh, that's right, it was Rick Carl, I think, was for Economic Development at the airport, approving this, but it was in twenty nineteen, so three years ago. How long can these, has nothing changed at all in all the discussions we've had on changing regulations and trying not to be the checkers of the box? Nothing has changed in any way?
No, ma'am. Two thousand nineteen, please understand, is that the process goes through first the land use, then the zoning, then they come in for preliminary plan, plat, and shows the general layout. They go through the overall development plan, they go and actually construct, build the infrastructure that's needed to support it, and then come back with the final plat to get it recorded. So there's a process that takes several years to get through, just to get to this stage of the final plat. This project had two phases. There's already a phase that's constructed of single-family home. This is the final stage, which had an option of either multifamily condominiums or townhome. They chose to do the townhome project, and that's here today.
We, we've, we've had other people come before us, and where it's been decades since they started the process, and we've had these discussions, and so I, I believe we had somewhat of, like, it's a continuous discussion on the timeframe in that. Is there any discussion or movement on how long something can stay open? Can someone come in in the seventies and create, start something, and then years later, like Farmington, I guess?
That's, that's different.
That's a great example, but, yeah.
Well, Farmington is, Farmington is different.
Right.
That's kind of a DRI, it's got statutory protection. Here, it depends on, on the permit. The, the plat is, is.
Because a lot of things change year by year by year in Volusia County, honestly.
Right, but it's, it's keyed towards essentially the preliminary plat, which is the construction plan, and as Clay described, it's a multi, multiple-year process, because if council approves a zoning application or a PUD, that doesn't mean that they, the houses start, you know, popping up that, that instance. They need to go through environmental review, they need to put in the infrastructure. The plat is usually the very last thing. They have most likely.
Because a lot of things change year by year by year in Volusia County.
Right, but it's keyed towards essentially the preliminary plat, which is the construction plan. And as Clay described, it's a multiple-year process. Because if council approves a zoning application or a PUD, that doesn't mean that the houses start popping up that instance. They need to go through environmental review, they need to put in the infrastructure. The plat is usually the very last thing. They have, most likely for this one, they have already started construction on the roads. They're probably almost done. Some, they've pulled some preliminary building permits. The plat is merely a ministerial act of recording the actual lands so that people can buy and sell property in reference to the plat. Here, there's already construction activity that hasn't occurred.
Let me kind of clear. The history on this property is that the original owners of the property came through and got approval of a final plat already, went out and did the infrastructure. There was already stormwater, water, sewer, and roads constructed. That property sat like that because of the economic downturn. The new owner purchased that property and redid the project in that they kept the roads, the water, the sewer, and the stormwater all in place and just basically built single-family and townhome instead of single-family and about, I think it was a, yeah, 189-unit condominium. So, where you see townhomes on platted lots, that was one giant piece of land to be developed for a condominium. So, the final plat is really just reconfiguring that piece of land for 18 townhomes instead of 189 condo units. Now, I have to verify the number of units, but it was a five-story, okay, 50 something. We'll get you the exact number, but either way, it's a de-intensification of what could have been approved under a previously approved plan.
Dr. Lowry?
There's a lot of steps that have been gone through up to this point, not just checking a box today and doing that, but there's been a lot of process led up to this point. We can't change the rules now midstream, especially on this project. If we want to do something like that later on, we can. It seems unfair also to the developer who's done everything according to the rules that we've put out there and has met everything. Not only that, if we don't approve this, I have a feeling we'll be opening up ourselves to lawsuits, which the taxpayers will also have to pay for. With that, I want to move approval for item F.
Motion to approve by Lowry, second by Johnson. Well, I don't know if the whole council can be sued or if they can just sue me individually, but I can't vote for this. At some point, I know we go through a long process. I know we're checking boxes. I know we're told everything's fine. We're told that all the time. Everything's going to work out fine here. All the houses behind this new plat are downhill. Now, we're taking the sand dune in front of it that water can actually go through close to A1A and paving it over and creating stormwater runoff downhill. Now, you're going to tell me that, no, it's all approved, this is engineered so that that won't happen. And I hear that over and over again. We have to stop doing things the same way we're doing it and come up with a better plan. I'm not voting for it. I can't, you know, I know that the owners have rights. Every citizen of Volusia County also has property rights. They're going to be handed the bill for this. They're going to pay for all the maintenance of the roads. They're going to pay for the flooding that comes up. We have to stop handing the bill for a developer's project to the rest of the public. If we can't vote against this, why in God's name does it come to us? Does the state require us to vote yes?
If the plat meets all the criteria as outlined in your land development code, which, you know, that's your authority, then yes, the case law is that there is basically no discretion. It is, you know, as we describe a ministerial act. That's why we put it on the consent agenda. That's why there isn't a lot of, kind of, in a normal rezoning process, you have that consideration of compatibility and things like that. Here, it is strict compliance with the land development code criteria. You can direct staff to amend the land development code criteria such as remove the requirement for, you know, that all lots must front on a paved public road, those kinds of things. But the state, the case law and the statute requires approval and compliance with the minimum standards of statute and the land development code criteria put in place by the local governments.
Okay, well, then when things change, like from the storm that we just had, can we pause it?
Well, that's a further question of, you know, that requires on whether or not you can meet that essentially temporary moratorium criteria. You know, it's, usually you'd have to identify a life, health, safety issue or some kind of overall policy change and approve that. And any pause can't be for a prolonged period of time. It has to be temporary in nature to avoid any, you know, takings or any Burt Harris claims.
Yeah, I think Lake Placid recently got a, you know, if it was six months or three years, pause while they reevaluated what's happening with water in that area. I think we need to take a step like that before we just continue doing everything the way that we're doing and handing the public the same problems that we're seeing all over the county. Ben Johnson?
Yes, we may not always agree with some of these things, but when the state law says what we have to do and it's going to end up costing the county a lot of money and the citizens on the lawsuit that we will probably lose, we don't have much choice. The correct way to do this, and now is probably the time to do it because of what's happened in this state, is to take this to the league of cities and league of counties, and we start working with our state legislators to change it. So, we do have more control back home again, which we have lost and we've all fussed about, you know, losing local control. So, I think the right thing to do is go ahead, let's just get this out of the way. And we talked to our lobbyists about changing things so we can once again have more control of our local communities.
I agree with that, Ben. We need to, we need to change the way that we're doing things. Heather Post?
Two things. So, I know that we're having the discussion, we're being told, as we are regularly told, that we must vote yes, and there's really no, like, I don't even know why we discuss half this stuff because it literally comes in front of us and we're told you must vote this way. But when it's a subdivision like this one, and I'll tell you the reason, one of the reasons, one of the two that I wanted this brought up was when the first part of this subdivision or this grouping was built, myself and the Public Works Director responded out there with a bunch of staff. And we responded out there because there was tremendous flooding going on in the surrounding neighborhood homes when this initial subdivision was being built. Because it was being built here and all the surrounding homes around it were down here. And so, everybody was calling me and saying, help, my home is getting, I've got like a canal running through the side yard, and we've got water pooling in the street. But this is the stuff that's been happening over and over and over again, and we just keep saying, we're just going to keep building and building and building. This is not even a matter of wetlands specifically, it's just, it's too much, right? And if we've already had this discussion prior, and now we're adding on to it and building more along A1A, I think that that's not going to be tremendously beneficial to the neighborhood and to the area to have more building in there. I just really don't. So, we've brought up before discussing doing a moratorium for, and I understand that we can't, again, by law, staff is telling us you can't do it on anything that has started the process. So, I would also say if we do discuss moratorium, that we look at everybody that is immediately going to turn in all their paperwork that, the week of the discussion or prior to the agenda item. But I certainly think that it's absolutely something we need to discuss. We have thousands and thousands of homes in Volusia County that are underwater now, and we're changing the landscape a lot. And so, it's definitely a discussion that needs to be had. I would say part of the, part of the discussion from other council members might be that it is what it is and we must do it, but the reason we're bringing it up is, number one, for the future of Volusia County residents, but also because it's on the mind of current Volusia County residents. We are bringing this up because people are coming to us and they're asking for it to be discussed. I had quite a few people reach out and say, what is this agenda item that's happening? People are starting to notice more and more and more what's going on, and they want this stuff explained. So, rather than just to approve on consent agenda, I think it's very important that we actually have this discussion so that the public is aware and can hear everything that's being said.
Ben Johnson?
Please call the vote.
Okay, I will call the vote. I'm still going to vote against it. Ben? We were just told all the criteria has been met. Asking for a discussion from the state, well, let's get some discussion from the state. All the criteria has not been met. There's been one serious person left out of this conversation, and that's the public. That's the taxpayers of Volusia County. That's the people that live down the hill from where this new plat is going to go, that's going to receive the water from it. It's the people of Volusia County that are going to pay for the roads there, that all those bills get handed to us. We don't have the money now, and we're going to be cleaning up the problem of flooding that's already in that neighborhood, and we just keep rubber stamping it, and I can't do it anymore. I refuse to do it. So, Teresa, please call the roll.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Gertman?
Based on state criteria, yes.
Mr. Johnson? Dr. Lowry?
Yes.
Ms. Post?
Based on what I'm being told as an elected official, I have to say yes.
Mr. Robbins? Mr. Brower?
No.
So, the plat is approved, six to one. And it's times like these I wonder why we have a council that the state doesn't just completely take over everything. Who's going to watch out for the local people of Volusia County? That brings us to item...
Mr. Chair, before we end that item, so can we add that to next meeting's agenda to have this discussion, like actually make it a discussion item?
We can. Would you like to make that motion?
Would like to make that motion.
Okay. Heather Post made a motion to, would you like a workshop?
No workshop, for the love of God, no workshop, just discussion.
At the regular county council meeting?
Yes, that we actually have a discussion on it and that we make some headway one way or the other.
On growth in general or this in particular?
On a moratorium.
On a moratorium, okay. So, she makes a motion that we discuss the possibility of a moratorium. That work for you? Is there a second? Please give us a second. We need to talk about this. Barbara Gertman, because your name is still up there, that's from the last discussion?
We have a committee that we just initiated, and that should be the focus where you say, you want to hear from the people. We've assigned 14 people. Why are we getting in front of that?
Because it's time that we stop handing our responsibility off to somebody else and using that as an excuse.
And we stop handing it off to the people that you're telling, you're saying need to represent us and we need to hear their voice?
They can meet and discuss it. We need to discuss it as well.
Again, we asked for this and we're not giving it an opportunity. This event happened, there's more information to be evaluated, but there's 14 people we just assigned to do this with us and for us and to give us feedback. Why are we getting in front of it?
Because it's our responsibility. We were elected to do this.
Mr. Chair, our responsibility is to listen to the committee that we put in place and then make our decisions, not make our decisions and then tell the committee that we put in place. Now, if we're not going to take and use our committees correctly, what you're going to have is people will not apply for our committees. So, I'm like Ms. Gertman, we're putting the cart ahead of the horse, and we need to just drop this, let them come to us, and then we can take and make a decision based on facts that the people have come forward and let us know, not just you. Thank you.
If the purpose of the committee is to relieve us of our responsibility and keep us from having to talk about anything because it's politically insensitive, let's get rid of the damn committee and do our job. We were elected to do this.
We also voted as a body, as a body, to put a committee in place of people, of professionals that each one of...
Let them talk.
Mr. Brower? That each one of us put people on that committee, and for us to usurp their authority would be totally and completely wrong. And I think right now it's time to call the question, and if we don't have a second, then it dies.
We have the authority, they don't have the authority. Once again, we're punting on our responsibility. Heather Post?
We're not usurping authority when, I mean, we have committees for lots of things. I mean, we shouldn't be doing anything at all and letting the committees make all the decisions. I don't agree with that at all. I think it's a collaboration. I'm for us stopping the bleeding right now and as a council, and then letting this committee, which by the way, the committee is made up largely of people who have been on all of our previous committees, I'm just saying, but letting the committee then provide input later on for us to make some valid decisions. But there is zero reason why at this point in time with the state that the environment in the county is in, that we should not be stopping the bleeding and then looking at the different, because apparently we can't do, we can do absolutely nothing until we change a number of things with the comprehensive plan and those various plans. So, until that point, I think that this is a very, very wise decision.
Dr. Lowry?
I think everybody up there has made their opinion known, ad nauseam, and there was a motion with no second. Can we please move on to item two?
Billy Wheeler?
Yeah, I'm just going to add to what everyone else has said. You know, we saw the importance of this issue, and we were asked by the public to form a committee, of which we did, and each one of us appointed two different people for each person. That is what we are supposed to do as elected officials. We asked the public, we got their input, now we have this committee. We really need, our decisions will be made off of what we decide after we get out of the committee, all of their suggestions. So, we don't have to go by what they say or whatever, but we certainly appointed them for a very important reason. We all decided that this is of extreme importance for the growth, and we've done what we're supposed to do. Now, we have to wait to hear from the committee. I think we just need to pass this and move on.
Okay, Heather, I'm sorry that your motion did not get a second. It's beyond reason to me that we can't discuss that. The committee, Billy, you won't even be here by the time the committee meets and comes back. We, the committee can meet and they can discuss, that doesn't tie our hands from doing what the public elected us to do. Barbara Gertman, and you can have the final say.
I think it's a very emotional time for all of us coming off of the recent event. And there's nobody that isn't feeling the reality of how this has impacted our community. But at one point, what you mentioned was... But at one point, what you mentioned was we, you needed to hear from the people and the people were the ones that hadn't been heard. Well, that's what this committee represents, is the people, is their voice. If we wanna ask them to consider a moratorium or whatever, then let's do that as part of that and get that feedback. But to say because of last week, we had a storm, that today we need to make a decision, I don't, I don't think is fair. So, as you said, you said I had the last word. Let that be the last word and let us move on, please.
Yeah, I said that. So we'll move on and I'll come back to it, uh, later. That brings us to, uh, item three, renewal of agreement with George Gideon Auctioneers. That brings us to item two, Ed Noseworthy Day.
Let's all take a deep breath to celebrate Ed. Let's clear the, the mood in the room. There we go.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, honorable members of council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. Personally, it is an honor to present this agenda item. Agenda item number two is a proclamation for Ed Noseworthy Day, sponsored by District Two Council Member Billy Wheeler. Requested by Amber Kay Lynch to honor the longtime Advent Health executive on his retirement. I'll read the proclamation. Ms. Wheeler, you wanna come down and present? I'll wait for Ms. Wheeler. Whereas during his 40-year career with Advent Health, Ed Noseworthy has provided exemplary leadership driven by his dedication to extending the healthcare system's healing ministry. And whereas, quick with a smile and words of encouragement, he is a humble and gifted man who has earned the respect of his staff, peers, patients, and community leaders. And whereas, Mr. Noseworthy has held numerous leadership roles, including CEO for Advent Health Hospitals in Daytona Beach, Orange City, East Orlando, and Deland. And whereas, under his leadership, Advent Health Daytona Beach has earned many honors, including designation as a top hospital by the Leapfrog Group, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and U.S. News and World Report. And whereas, he has also guided the opening of a 16-bed pediatric Level II neonatal intensive care unit and the implementation of a state-of-the-art surgical robotics program at Advent Health Daytona Beach. And whereas, with vision and vitality, Mr. Noseworthy has worked tirelessly to provide patients with safe, compassionate, and efficient care. Now, therefore, the County Council of Volusia County, Florida hereby proclaims October 4th, 2022, as Ed Noseworthy Day in Volusia County, and urge residents to honor his, this outstanding man for his dynamic leadership, ingenuity, and dedication to serving hospital patients and the community at large. Dated this fourth day of October 4th, 2022.
Well, real quick, one of my very first meetings that I had after I was elected, Ed invited me up to his office and we had lunch in his office and he gave me a book to read. And it was a Navy SEAL book, Extreme Ownership of Leadership and How to Be a Good Leader and Count on Your Team and Work With Your Team and Let Every Person That's Involved in That Team Be a Leader. That, I have read that three or four times. I thank you for giving that to me. I also thank you recently for a, a call that I needed some help with, uh, my sister with hospice and Ed was first one there. So, um, I just appreciate your friendship, but I certainly appreciate what you've done for Volusia County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, one of the things I find in the work that we get to do is how much you depend on the elected officials. And I have to say that, um, in each of the towns that I've been in, I've had great working relationships with the mayors and I've had a great working relationship with the county, uh, commission. And I just wanna thank you for the work that you do. You take it seriously. And, uh, we are a great county. Volusia County is a great county. And it's because there's a lot of people that love the county and want it to be its best. We have four facilities in this county and I've had the opportunity to be at all of them. Some longer at others than not. But, um, there is nothing that, um, can get done without people. And we hire a lot of people that are, live in Volusia County. And, uh, they are great people. I would not be able to be here standing with you if I could, if, if it wasn't for the people that does the day-to-day work. And I am very grateful. I'm grateful for the leaders that we have here that will continue that work. And, um, I just love Volusia County. I got here in 2001 and I really didn't wanna leave. Um, it's a special place. And again, thank you for the recognition. I, I think there's other people that deserve a day, um, but I'm grateful that, uh, what I've been able to do has made a difference, uh, to the people in this community, because that's why we're here. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve that, uh?
Second.
Motion to approve by Lowry, second by Gertman. All in favor, say aye. And the, uh, the presentation is approved seven to, six to zero. Now that brings us to item three, a renewal of agreement with George Gideon Auctioneers, Zellwood, Florida for Surplus Property Auction Services.
Good morning. Pam Willskey, Director of Purchasing and Contracts. Item three is to request the approval of the council for the first one-year renewal of our agreement with George Gideon's Auctioneer Services. Estimated revenue generating contract of $1.5 million.
Motion to approve by, uh, Johnson, second by Lowry. Any discussion? That's okay. Okay. Wow. They're dropping like flies. Okay. No discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion still carries five to zero.
Ms. Gertman said aye, so it would.
Oh, she pre-voted?
Motion is approved seven to zero. They can hear in the back, uh, back room. Uh, item, item four. Resolution, rescinding resolution 2015-043, closing Old Deland Road at Fire Tower Road in Daytona Beach area. Tad? It's too low?
Yeah, it's just died in the low.
Thank you.
If I'm too quiet because the microphones are low, just tell me.
What'd you say?
Is this better?
Yes.
Good morning. Tad Kaysbeer, County Engineer. This is, uh, item four. This is the request to rescind a prior resolution 2015-043. Back in 2015, uh, solidated Timoca, who owns 850 acres of property north of Old Deland Road at, uh, Fire Tower Road, had requested that the county, uh, prepare and approve a resolution that would effectively break Old Deland Road from its intersection with Fire Tower Road. Their goal at that point in time was to market the property for distribution center. Distribution centers do not like to mix local traffic with their proposed truck traffic. The primary goal for that resolution was to really separate out the truck traffic from the adjacent local traffic. County agreed to do so as a part of that resolution, as long as three certain conditions were met before the break would occur. The, uh, requirements were that, uh, a distribution center would be constructed north of Old Deland Road and employ more than 300 employees. Also required that, uh, you had to wait until such time as Fire Tower Road was extended north of Old Deland Road. And then finally, uh, the city of Daytona Beach had to accept Fire Tower Road for maintenance purposes or cause the development, uh, developer or his property owners association to accept that. Make, no longer be county, county maintenance. So the development never moved forward at that point in time. We have a new property owner. They have an interest in developing the property. They have changed the development plan that was previously approved by the city of Daytona. All 850 acres are located within the city of Daytona, north of Old Deland Road. They have purchased property south of Old Deland Road, all the way to US 92 and that Fire Tower Road area. Instead of using Fire Tower Road as their primary entrance, they will now construct a new entrance that meets their needs. It'll be much larger than Fire Tower Road. The goal would be to get a signal at that particular location and support their new development. Their new development would have potentially some distribution, but it would geared, geared more towards industrial. They are also, uh, adding commercial in that southern portion and potentially even some residential in that southern section, in the area right there at, uh, Old Deland Road, south to, uh, US 92. So with that, um, when you take a look at the traffic situation out there, US 92 currently has a capacity of just about 40,000 vehicles per day. Currently has about 19,000. When you average everything out over the last five years, it's ranged between 18,600 and 19,500. So when you add the 26,000 vehicles that would be added by the proposed development at its full buildout, you would be well above the capacity of US 92 for that stretch from Air Access Road over to the I-4 interchange. So taking a look at the situation, the county staff, uh, understanding that we're gonna have more traffic than, uh, that one road could support. We looked at the resources that we have in that area. Old Deland Road has a capacity of approximately 13,000 vehicles per day and only currently utilizes between 300 and 500, depending on the day of the week, you're counting traffic. So we do have an immediate resource right there that could support the traffic, uh, that would be an overflow traffic on 92. And what we're recommending is that pedestrian, uh, passenger vehicles, non-truck traffic, be allowed to utilize Old Deland Road, that we rescind that requirement to break Old Deland Road at the intersection of Fire Tower Road and allow for employees, visitors, uh, when traffic is heavy on 92 to use Old Deland Road as an access to the site. Uh, we would go ahead and, uh, as directed in the, uh, resolution, uh, for your approval, we would, uh, eliminate truck traffic on Old Deland Road east of the proposed access road. We would go ahead and, uh, in support of that, so that we have something that's easily enforceable by the sheriff, we would go ahead and establish a weight limit so that, uh, any of the heavy trucks that would be generated by the site are required to use 92. They would not be allowed to use Old Deland Road in an enforceable means. That's what the, uh, the staff is recommending for your approval, is in support of this development, which the development itself, if I didn't make that clear early, is located within the city of Daytona Beach. We don't have control over what that development is, other than to, uh, give a recommendation to the city. It's not our role to decide what they're going to put on it. Our position is to take the conditions that are there and make the best of the situation overall. So as a staff, this is what we think makes the best situation possible with that condition, assuming approval by the city of Daytona Beach. Any questions?
Fred Lowry?
I actually remember. That was one of the first things that, uh, my first year on the council here. I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Lowry, a second by Johnson. Discussion. Heather Post?
Do we have any public participation? I got several emails.
Yes, we do have several. You wanna do them first before you ask questions? We have, uh, three. One, uh, I know we did get an e-, or I got an email from Travis Hudson. Would you like to come and, and speak to us, please?
Oh, I live here. 16 years. They took our road, gonna push me out of my home. 13,000 cars a day on our two-lane road. Come on. Ridiculous. Our road intersects at International. That's where it goes to. How's that alleviating the traffic? It's not. This road needs to be dead-ended where the residents are. Please do this for us. Put yourselves in our shoes. We live here. We won't be able to anymore. Thank you.
Uh, Richard Michael?
Good morning. Um, my name is Richard Michelle. I'm a resident at, uh, 3565 Old Deland Road. On 416, 2015, uh, the council adopted resolution 2015-043, at which time Old Deland Road would be closed and a cul-de-sac erected on the east side of Fire Tower Road and west side. So far, the properties east of Fire Tower Road have been purchased and only outer shells remain with the vacation of Fire Tower Road. All that needs to be done is close Old Deland Road on the east side. The west side could remain open since there are businesses that operate there. There are only a few residential homes on the east side and we homeowners are in agreement that the road can be closed. This is a small county road, not built for high-volume traffic. In fact, the road itself does not even meet state guidelines on width. Stating that the road would be closed to truck traffic is absurd. I can just see all the truck traffic heating the signage. The original resolution should remain. Would be cost-effective. Safety would be enhanced. Because when I go out and check my mail in the morning, I have to watch the traffic is passing by unless I get hit. My mailbox sits inches from the end of the road, white line. Sits nine inches from my grass line. My mailman said even one time, he almost got hit a couple times from the posted speed limit. It's 35 miles an hour for residential area and mostly ignored. Cars as well as trucks speed down the rough street. I think the only thing that saves us from the bend in the road, otherwise it would be like going to the races. It doesn't seem to be any regard for life or limb out there. It doesn't seem to be any regard for life or limb out there. The only decent nights I have, uh, slept, as I've gotten, is the shutdown of I-four entrance this past week due to the hurricane. Has been a barrage of dump trucks running past my home at three in the morning. In closing, I am not a big-time attorney or some large corporate executive. We do not have a lot of money to spend on attorney fees. I'm a veteran of Vietnam War who served my country proudly and with honor. My country's flag flies high at my home. I'm retired. I would like to live in the area that has a country way of life. And this is what we have now. I love my home and my area the way it is. I am pleading that this resolution stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Chud.
Good morning, Chair Warren Bauer and all the members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I am in objection to the commercial traffic in Old Deland Road. There is a wide variety of reasons why commercial traffic should be banned from Old Deland Road, east of Fire Tower Road intersection. Just some are. This area is currently zoned and labeled as residential area. Distinct safety threats to humans and animals exist. Despite requests to the engineers of Lucha County Public Works, there's been no answer to the actual gross vehicle rating of the existing road surface. What is the GW to rating? Commercial vehicles currently using Old Deland Road are rated seventy to eighty thousand pounds gross vehicle weight. Because of weight and size, vehicles are often using the very edge of the roadway or even the grass, destroying existing asphalt surface, who will be responsible for expenses of future road repairs or upgrades. The width of commercial lanes that actually parallel Old Deland Road on State Route ninety-two are thirteen feet, four inches in width. The travel lanes on Old Deland Road and Educators Road are only ten to eleven feet wide, with no shoulder on either road. According to Florida statute three-one-six point five-one-five, commercial vehicles can only travel on roads that have a minimum of a twelve-foot wide lane. Large commercial vehicles that pass in opposing directions typically have exterior rearview mirrors that extend beyond the vehicle body and are in danger of striking one another. As such, drivers are leaving the road surface at times, even in rainy conditions. This can easily create a single or multiple-vehicle rollover accident. Breaking skid marks from large commercial vehicles in many locations already exist in the section of the roadway. Large commercial traffic, including trailer trucks carrying cars, shipping containers, and more, including fifty-three-foot boxes, in addition to dump trucks and more, now travel on Old Deland Road twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Three, speed tests have been conducted in the last few months in Old Deland Road, and despite a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, traffic has averaged fifty-five miles an hour with a high of seventy-six miles per hour. Environmental issues. Old Deland Road is listed as a flood zone on official records. I am proved flooding as a major problem as both Old Deland Road and Educators Road were closed. As such, any widening, modification, or reconstruction of the existing road must be in full compliance of EPA regulations, as a study for any change has been instituted. Much of Old Deland Road is part of a bordering forested area managed by the state of Florida, as the Timoca Trail and Tiger Bay environmentally protected areas. It contains beer, beer, bear, excuse me, deer, raccoon, turtles, bobcat, and a wide variety of bird life. I just hope you'll consider, this is a residential area currently. We've been terribly abused by the traffic that uses Old Deland Road, and we hope it ends. Thank you.
Thank you, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I wasn't going to speak on this, but, um, it's been like fifty years we've been waiting to build in Daytona Beach. We were waiting and waiting. We had, um, the LPGA development years ago, and we thought it was going to expand. It didn't. So now that you know what, it has hit the fan and we're building. Old Deland Road is an old road. It's not eight years old. It's almost a hundred years old, and it used to go the entire width. So for seven years, they've had a nice, quiet community, is what we're hearing. Then they get up and say, it's not quiet community, they're racing through the neighborhood. This area needs to be developed. The roadway needs to be widened. They will give you funding, and they always do, for the surrounding roadways that they're affecting. They, when they build, will affect Old Deland Road. So that funding, I'm asking you to dedicate to this road, not only for the residents that live there, but for all the people in the future that are going to need this, because ninety-two, trust me, is getting developed. It's that big empty space is not there anymore. Daytona Beach has built up the LPGA. As I told you, there's only one property left, uh, north of, uh, ninety-two on LPGA that is not in process of being developed. This is just to the west. It needs to be developed. So I'm asking you to consider passing this and also helping them out by dedicating those funds that you're going to get to their road to help them out. Thank you.
Also say we have, uh, excuse me, Rob Merrill, uh, is here from Cobb Cole. He's the attorney for the applicant. Uh, he's here for questions, but apparently you have a statement as well.
Well, I was going to have questions only until people started to talk about it. Uh, for the record, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, uh, one forty-nine South Ridge Wood. I'm here on behalf of the current owner of the property, and, um, as was mentioned by Tad, this, uh, has had some slight changes to it, but it was, it was approved some, some six or seven years ago, the project. It's eight hundred and fifty acres of industrial development. We acquired, my client acquired some property, as Tad mentioned, along ISB between Old Deland and ISB, and we decided to move the entrance to a, a better location for this truck traffic to the east. It's also going to line up with a project that's happening right across the street on the south side of ISB. So from a traffic standpoint, and I know John Chaney and others are here could talk about that, um, I think it makes better sense. So I'm going to try to make your jobs a little easier. I appreciate the comments that were made by the neighbors that live on Old Deland. We've had some interaction with them, uh, based on the Daytona Beach zoning and planning processes that we've gone through on that piece of property. Like I said, which has been long ago approved, other than one thing which we've done, is we've added, I think, about twenty-something acres. A big part of that is going to be, uh, a projected for workforce housing, for the, for the, uh, development that's going on out there, which everybody, I think, seems to think it's a good idea. That's really the only change that's being made here, that and the actual location of the main road that goes into the project. Um, so, I, you know, we don't, the, the resolution that you have, uh, opposed to be, uh, resolve, absolved or vacated, you guys can approve it or deny it. We, I don't care so much, because as was mentioned, it was a precondition. The, uh, the cul-de-sacking of that road is a precondition of, of this road being built, which we're not going to build. So it either dies on its own, or you guys kill it right now. It doesn't really matter to us. So that makes, I think, your job easier. What I'll also say to make it easier is, uh, all the folks that were showing concern about that road being open or closed at the entrance to this, to this project, we're happy to do what you, what you would, what you did back then with the new location, if you guys choose to. We don't have a problem with that. So, um, my client's fine with either having it be open or having it be cul-de-sacked. I think, you know, between the county and the, and the city, uh, and the developers, engineers talking about this, I think it's kind of flip-flop back and forth. And Tad, I'll let you speak up if you want to say otherwise, but it, as far as we're concerned, the, the, the people that are going to invest in this property and, and build this project, you know, bringing countless jobs and, and tax base, which everybody's very much in favor of, are happy with doing, going either way. We don't want to disrespect the neighbors in any way. Um, we know have, we have some out there, just in fairness, that have said they want it to be open. They prefer it to be open. There's some people who have some trucking, you know, thing, concerns and businesses out there that would rather have it open. And then there's some that'd rather have it closed. So we're fine either way. I'm fine with whatever decision you guys make today, yes or no, to be honest with you, um, as the property owner. And, uh, happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Heather Post.
I have one question for you, Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you? So in the actual agenda item, it's very hard for the public to really see where we're talking about. I don't know if you could zoom in just a little bit. So if we're looking where the arrow is, and there you go. And so that's I-four, uh, ISB interchange there. You're saying that, uh, you've moved the location from, uh, Fire Tower Road, correct?
Yeah, Tad's got a better, he has a better.
The new road would be?
The staff has a better exhibit to show you, and then we don't have to be approximate.
That wasn't very good for, that's why I printed that one off Google.
There you go.
The one with the plat stuff?
So if you look to the, to the left side of, of the screen, you'll see Fire Tower Road, um, fifty-foot right away. That's the area that, uh, was originally going to be the main entrance to the project. But we've acquired this land to the right there, where you see the road shown now. Um, and, and that can be as easily cul-de-sacked as, as the other one, if, if you guys, you and the city decide that's what you'd prefer.
Gotcha. Okay, so if, if you could put the other one back up then, just for the public, because this didn't show us where it is really in, in, comparison with the, or, hold on. Ted, do you have any idea how, um, just hang on, Rob, but, but Ted, do you have any idea how long, um, that is from that location, where they're wanting to do the roadway to the, I think?
From their proposed access to the interchange itself is just over a third of a mile.
And so not having, so we have two, two issues here. We have the residents that are just in that, that little baby area in that third of a mile, that are, we have all of those little houses in there of people who have.
Approximately five, four, five thousand.
Who have built their homes and invested, that's, that's all they have, right? That's where they live.
Yes.
And so we're, we're basically setting them aside to save a third of a mile in traffic congestion? So I'm, I'm a little confused about that. If you could explain why simply coming out the road and doing the cul-de-sacking as, as was proposed in the initial resolution, would not, would, would make that much of a difference when you're headed to the corner there?
Sure. One of the things that, uh, wasn't mentioned earlier was that, uh, the Department of Transportation is responsible for US ninety-two, and they do have a project to widen US ninety-two, basically from the interchange east, go from four to six lanes. Now, they don't have it funded for construction, uh, so it's not an imminent project, but they do have a plan to add lanes to that particular portion. So this portion from their access point, basically to the interchange, would not be included within those limits. So that section does not have a plan to go wider, so that's why our focus has been on that particular section, as well as the fact that Old Deland Road being the only county asset that's really in, in, in the discussion. We're using what we have.
So the, the resolution that was proposed in twenty fifteen was, it was actually this. It's that, I just want to put that out, because I don't think, the members of the public didn't quite understand when we, when we're talking about cul-de-sacking and all of that, and reading the, the little blurbs that we have here, so just really to explain it, um, so that people understand. In the initial resolution, it, it was said that, okay, a road's going to be built through to do this, uh, development, this project, and both sides of Old Deland Road would be basically cut off there. You wouldn't be able to access it.
Correct.
And, well, and that was, that resolution was created for a reason. It was created because those people in that tiny section didn't want to have all of this stuff.
Actually, the, the request came from the developer. Because they were pursuing, uh, distribution centers, based on the heels of the success of Greater Jail, they wanted to put it in the best marketing opportunity, so they had approached the county. The developer had specifically asked for this last time.
Well, what I'm hearing from the, from all the residents in that tiny section are that they greatly, um, uh, approved and appreciated if that was being done, that there was the cul-de-sacking, um, and that, that there was no access there. But what I'm hearing from you, Rob, now, is that the developer would be willing to cul-de-sack the, the east side?
So we're fine either way, both sides, one side, zero sides, um, you know, whatever works for, for the neighbors. I, you know, just, if you were to back, back up and see the whole thing, the, there are other ways in and out of this area. And frankly, I'm not sure many people use that one. They, they may, I don't know. And certainly, you know, the, the more open access, the more convenient for people, but you, you balance that against, I think, the idea that there would be truck traffic going through, that, that's why we ended up with this. So to the extent that that, that whole idea translates over to the other entrance, and you feel it's the same, you know, you have the same needs, okay, we, we're welcome to do that, we're happy to do that too.
Well, so you've brought up the traffic as well, and I've driven down that road. I, my mechanic, um, he, he passed away unfortunately, um, DW guy, but, um, he, uh, lives on that road. And I can tell you that every time I traveled, I didn't live on the road, and every time I traveled down that road, it was very precarious for me, because it, it is a two-lane road. You've got huge, very, very deep ditch on one side that, uh, very, very deep, two, on both sides, yeah. And, uh, very precarious if you're just driving, you know, and you're not a truck, and you're not, uh, having people speed by you. And, um, and adding the numbers that I'm hearing onto that road just seems, it seems insane to me as, just as a person who comes in and, uh, frequents a business there. So, um, I don't, I, I think it's, you know, we're, we're doing all this development in the county and, and, and we're making all these changes. And like the subdivision from earlier that we discussed, you know, when that was built, all the people in the area flooded. The things that we are doing is affecting the current residents and pollution. We really need to start taking care of people that we have and the people that are here, um, in addition to, to what we're working on for the future. But, but we've got to take care of our own, right? And, um, even though it's just a few residents that live on that road, it is a few residents that live on that road, and it's their homes, and it's their land, and we need to, we need to value that, and we need to protect that. So I would be willing to, uh, approve this if in fact it sounds like the developer is willing to cul-de-sack that east side. So at least they would not have that continuous truck traffic going through in front of their homes.
I said, we're fine with that.
And that would not be, uh, the staff's preferred recommendation, simply because we now are forcing all twenty-six thousand trips onto US ninety-two. Obviously, the council has full control over what, uh, what occurs.
But all, just to clarify though, but all, all of those trips are coming out onto ninety-two in that one-third mile or, or in that section? They're coming out, they're coming out anyway. So we can either run them in front of the people, the, the people who, who own homes right there, or just ship them out right here. I mean, it's, it's a very small section, very small section.
The one part that, uh, we did not discuss earlier is that as a part of the development, uh, the developer, prior to moving into their second phase, is working with the Department of Transportation to make modifications to the I-four interchange.
Right.
So a good portion of the trips would actually be leaving ninety-two at the I-four interchange in that third of a mile. So they would not continue east on ninety-two at that point. So in point of fact, it's not twenty-six thousand trips east of the interchange, it's a lower number.
And to your point.
You, you would not have that same situation that you were just mentioning. It would drop once you get to the interchange.
So to your point, Heather, I mean, we talk a lot about, you know, what are the developers doing? They try to fix things when they're building. Well, in this case, you know, we're going through the full concurrency review process for this project, and we're talking to DOT, you know, presently about making that significant improvement to that interchange. If you guys understand it, the whole thing's going to work way better at that intersection. And so, you know, I, I think that's an example of developers saying, okay, we're going to be part of the solution. And, you know, this is, it's eight hundred and fifty acres of, of millions of square feet of industrial. It's a big project, um, so it's big to the community, it's big to the county, it's big for the, for the city, and we're coming with solutions. So we're in the process of doing that right now. So Ted, I, I, I tend to agree with you that there's a little bit of relief for that one-third mile. It balanced against whether it's bothering people's, you know, um, you know, housing there. I, I get that, so that's what I'm saying, we're going to leave it.
It's a good idea that we have, that we have development working with FDOT and, and doing these different things, but, um, but without running over the people who actually live here. So, um, and, and it's, it's doable without running over the people who actually live here. So if in fact we did cul-de-sack, then FDOT, FDOT would have to, FDOT has to respond. So if in fact we did cul-de-sack, then FDOT would have to respond. And we have to respond when we're looking at transportation issues in terms of where are we at? Where are we at right now? And what's the situation? And then what are we going to do to respond to the situation? Well, if in fact that is the situation where you can't go east on Old Deland Road and you must come out at that interchange then or that intersection, then FDOT would just have to work on working the interchange based on that.
I don't think it affects the interchange so much. So that's why I'm saying we're happy to do it. I think it'll function fine. I think I understand task and service. The six one we have does and the other kind of thing.
Well, the one group that hasn't represented that did appear at the previous resolution, there were three speakers in favor of keeping it as it was. So not breaking the Old Deland Road, two of which were business owners west of here. And then one of them was a resident that lived on Fourth Street. Fourth Street is an unpaved street west of here. And it's the only north-south connection west of the Fire Tower Road or the access road. You can look at it. So if it was the council's position to cul-de-sack, what the recommendation from the staff at that point would be that you would only cul-de-sack the east side
Right.
where the residents are located and keep the connection on the west side so that the business owners that do have a need for their trucks and such to make that movement can continue to do so on that western side. But it's still...
That makes sense. So that would be my suggestion. I know we've already made the motion, but if anyone's... That motion.
We don't have a motion.
Oh.
We have no motion.
I thought we did a motion to approve. We did do a motion. We absolutely did. I think you did it, Brad.
Brad? Did you make the motion?
Motion was by Dr. Lowry, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
So if you are, since you did the motion, if you're willing to amend your motion to include that...
Mr. Chair, why don't we move on to some of our other speakers here on the dais because we might have some ideas that pop up.
Well, so that's the end of my statement if you would be willing to do that.
Okay. Ted, we have two of the people, two of the residents are both waved at me. They would like to speak with the approval of the council. Everybody's allowed to speak twice to an item. I think Travis Hudson. And then you would also like to speak again, sir?
Mr. Chair, that's for the people on the dais. That's not for the people who've already spoken. That's for the people on the dais.
Would the council be pleased to listen to the resident whose life is affected by this? Or would you like to shut him up?
Not until maybe we look at the dais speaking because we might have some solutions that possibly could come up. You need to honor your people that are on the speaker's list.
He was on the speaker's list. Okay. I just, for some reason, I always think it's good for the council to hear from the public that we represent first. But let's do it that way. Danny Robbins.
Thank you. What was the approximate build-out timeframe of this?
There is no established build-out time. Now, given the amount of development that is proposed, it would be quite some time before they get into that. The development's start date, when they would actually be open, is expected to be years from now.
Okay. Do we have both the land roads slated? What I'm trying to do is find a balance here. I know we're not going to be 100% everything. But as Attorney Merrill said, you know, we want to try to make something work here for keeping the residents a top priority, but also balancing that out with the proposed changes. Do we have or what is the residents looking for as a happy medium? If nothing or axing this, you know, versus axing this completely? Is there something? Would they like a little bit wider road in front of their house? Would they like a little bit of buffer? Whatever the case is, do they want to... Are we going to improve the road on the, you know, widen on the west side and shift everything over? What, you know, that's kind of what I'm looking at. I was trying to find a little bit of balance. We kind of read and feed off of better to make everything work.
Sure, sure. And they'll be able to speak to a little bit better. I don't want to put, I think they can state it again as well. But what we've looked at when we reviewed the resolution approval back in 2015 as well as the conversations that we've had with the property owners as this resolution has come forward. Their goal is not to increase the traffic out there on the road. They have stated to us, the primary concern is the truck traffic, which we certainly understand, which is why we put in the element to eliminate that portion of the truck traffic through the eastern side, trying to reach that happy medium. We thought that's would get us there. We do expect that the developer will be resurfacing that road. And we do have some concerns. Initially, there had been talk about widening the road. The issue with widening the road in this case is actually a negative for the residents. Once you widen the road, then the speed will pick up. Those people that aren't comfortable driving a little bit faster when they get a little bit wider lanes, they will definitely drive faster. As the residents have stated, we have a hard time keeping people below the posted speed limit as it is now. You widen that road section out, they're just going to go fast. So keeping the lanes narrow is one of the things that we engineers use to try to lower the speed on a roadside. So the other thing that helps, if anybody wants to hear it that lives out there, is when you have more traffic on the road section in a narrow condition, you're also going to have a lower speed by the drivers because you're just not as comfortable flying around when you've got opposing traffic coming in your direction. The gentleman was exactly right. This road is not safe for trucks. The narrow width and the increased traffic, we think, will be the best way to keep trucks from utilizing it when the sheriff isn't present to be able to enforce the rules and requirements that are proposed.
Just in their defense, in the residents' defense a little bit, how many roads do we have that say, you know, eight tons or over? No, you know, and no trucks in there and you just see them go by. So, you know, we need to look at it and definitely make them a priority and kind of hear what... I'd like to see here what kind of improvement, improvements within, you know, realistic of what we can afford to do or what's good or what's not or what's good for them. So I'm curious to see what they have to say.
Ben Johnson.
Mr. Merrill, my question's for you, please.
Yes, sir.
How far east does this piece of property go? How close to the intersection of the I-4?
Put it up on the screen again. It's the best way to show you and hit the scale. Yeah, the last, I think the last, no, not the last slide.
Did you say a third of a mile?
Yeah, it's a third of a mile, I think, to get to the end. But the property is in odd shape, Ben, so it's hard to tell you distance-wise. We need the picture. There you go. That shows you the whole project, Ben. And so the entrance is on the right-hand side.
Let's go back to it.
The one that had the color on should work fine. That one, either one. So that's the whole project. And you see the entrance over on the right-hand side. So the project has some landmass east of it, if you will. But it kind of, it meanders, it's a rounded edge over there.
Okay, that kind of answered my question because I was wondering if it went far enough east if y'all were willing to put a road that went closer to the... For the employee's entrance that fed into this but was, came in closer to the interstate.
So ultimately, there's going to be a stoplight out there. And I think it's going to be, so it's controlled. I think it's going to be fine. That's why we're saying we're fine either way. It sounds to me like the compromise is put the cul-de-sack on the east side to protect the folks on the east that are worried about traffic and then leave the west side open and leave it at that. I think the bottom line is, I think the right thing for you guys to do today is say yes to this. And then if you want to do something with the other one, we can do that.
Well, that was my question because I wanted to see if y'all came further east. And if according to this property, you do not. You just come basically down the Old Deland Road in one little section. So that answered my question. I was trying to maybe look for an alternate solution where we could take and put a feeder road that came back towards interstate. But I see y'all don't own that property, so that's kind of out.
Okay. We do have two residents who would like to speak again. I'd like to hear from them. Danny Robbins has said he would like to hear from them again. So if we... Travis, you want to go first? Travis Hudson and then Robert Judd, you wanted to speak. Thank you. Okay. It's fine.
I would appreciate the road to be cul-de-sacked to the east. People said that they were going to work with DOT. They're going to open up a new interchange at I-4. But there's no reason for them to have our street. And ultimately, it's going to push us out of our homes. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Judd?
Thank you for the second opportunity. Just a point of clarification. I would love to see signage at the intersection of Route 92 and Old Deland Road that prohibits commercial traffic. Currently, there is some commercial traffic that comes down to Educators Road and makes a left turn to 92. And if you went up there today, well, perhaps the storm has washed it out. But typically, there are very, very large skid marks and track marks from large vehicles making that turn. So if you posted at the end of Old Deland Road, it would eliminate the problem east of Fire Tower Road out to 92. And that's the goal that I'm seeking. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you for this opportunity. Yeah, we're in agreement with the east side being cul-de-sacked because the majority of our homeowners are on that side. The west side is mostly all commercial. The VW place and all that is up there to the left. They're happy having it open. They want that open, which is fine with me. That'll really... The property that, the road that we're in question of is only approximately not even a half a mile long. I mean, going out Fire Tower Road where they're going to do it in and then going down 92, they're really, this morning I did it, and it's really, there's no difference. So by cul-de-sacking us off would be really great. I mean, that's the way I feel. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Heather, you want to amend your amendment?
Yes, so the amendment was to block off the east side of Old Deland Road and basically cul-de-sack the east side. But I'd also like to add, since it's a county road, if we could just add the signage there at 92 and Old Deland, is that feasible to just say?
The weight limit signage?
The what signage?
The weight limit signage?
Well, just to say no trucks or what can we do through there?
We generally use the weight limit as the best way to enforce. It makes it a little bit easier.
Okay.
You don't necessarily want to prohibit like FedEx.
Whatever the truck drivers need to see to know that they don't go down that road? That would be great if we could just throw up a sign. Is that feasible?
We can certainly do that. Is that something you are looking at immediately?
That would be my amendment. Doesn't take very long to create a sign in the sign shop. I know this.
Well, it just potentially affects the business owners that are west of the residences.
Well, when the cul-de-sack is filled, it's all part of it.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking about the timing. So I'm trying to make sure I'm clear when you would want that.
Are we clear on the amendment?
We're going to see in a second. Because he made the first motion, correct? Did you want to add to this?
Sure, I'll second that for discussion. I wanted to ask a question. Ted, obviously, the staff thinks it's the best scenario to not do that. What, how does that impact now? If we block off or keep the cul-de-sack on the east side, how does that affect what you all are wanting to accomplish?
Sure. Well, in the short term, it won't affect much in anything. It won't be until the second phase is really constructed and you've reached full build-out that you would start to see the impact. And part of the answer is, we don't know what the situation will be at that point based on development pattern around here may add additional trips. One of the requirements that we're going to make of the developer was that they would update their traffic impact analysis tween phases one and two to take better, well, to give us a better picture of where they are and the development pattern, make sure that that's reflected. He's retiring soon.
He didn't fill out the form either.
He obviously came down forward because he'd like to speak. Attorney would allow him.
But yes, initially, there won't be much of an issue overall. It won't be until full build-out, worst-case scenario, where you would have all those additional trips that would put that traffic on 92. And a large part of that depends, again, on what happens with 92 and the widening east of there. So final numbers at full build-out, yeah, they don't look good. But until that time, and we've got the ability built in with doing that second traffic impact analysis to make modifications at that point in time. Go ahead, John.
John Cheney, Volusia County Traffic Engineer. My only recommendation is that the motion say that the appropriate signage be in place to prohibit trucks. If we do a weight limit, I hate to say it, but the sheriff's office does not do that. That's only handled by the Department of Transportation's motor carrier compliance. They have the equipment and stuff like that. So if we do like we normally do on other roads, we just say no trucks, local deliveries only. That allows the residential trash pickup and Amazon dealerships and trucks and stuff like that and FedEx who basically service those customers.
Perfect. That's what I would suggest them for the signage. Thank you.
Okay, so your amendment... Did you have another question? Your amendment is for the appropriate signage in place and to cul-de-sack the east.
Right.
And if you don't mind a question then. Per the first resolution, the one that was approved previously, there were set conditions or timeframes in which certain things occurred. Now, it was open-ended. It was not a very well-written resolution along those lines. It just said, "Things shall commence." It didn't give a deadline for things being done. If council's moving forward with this, at what point in time would the cul-de-sacking occur? What would you want to tie that tie to? The beginning of development, prior to the first CO? What would be the council's goal for the cul-de-sacking occurring?
What would your recommendation?
Well, we can come back with a resolution modification. That might be the best thing where we have a chance to kind of evaluate this particular scenario and bring it back the next council meeting or the following council meeting. If that's, that would at least give us a chance to think this through instead of approving something too quickly and then ending up with the same situation we had last time where things aren't very clear as to when they need to occur.
So you're only talking about the time as to... So it's going to happen, just you're looking at the time?
Well, it sounds like that's, I'm reading the tea leaves here and what I'm hearing. And if that's the council's direction, great. Give us a chance to go ahead and clean up the resolution. Make sure it clearly reflects what the council wants to do. Put in some thought, working with the developer to figure out the timing on these aspects so that we get it something that all three parties are happy with, the county, the developer, and the residents.
So we could go ahead and pass the amended motion today? And then you guys could come back with timetable or whatever in regard to that?
We'd come back with a new resolution.
New resolution? Okay.
So for the record, Rob Merrill, again, so what we don't want to have happen is that this project that's in process, that is up for first reading tomorrow and then in two weeks, second reading at the city commission, that gets held up in any way as a result of this. I mean, you guys are doing the right thing. We're happy to go along with what you're doing. But I want to make sure that the logistics don't cause us any delay.
Considering that, understanding that, the most important item for your development moving forward is really the next item overall. This one is really ancillary and part of your driveway connections, which don't need to be solidified until later. So, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so were you done?
Question. So I just want to be very clear for the homeowners that are sitting here. So this is not official until the, you come back with the written resolution, the clarification in the actual new language, and then we approve that, correct?
Yes, I think the best way to proceed would be to have the council take a vote on what they would like us to amend the resolution to conceptually stay. We would go back, prepare said resolution, and... I think we could potentially have something, if not the next meeting, definitely by the meeting following that. But with a short turnaround, I think we could have this.
Why couldn't we have it by next meeting?
Well, I just want, with all the parties, I just want to make sure that we've got a little bit of time.
Okay.
Minors.
Russ is saying next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to make it very clear to the homeowners that... Because I've been here two terms and seen a lot of resolutions and a lot of things approved and then...
Well, you heard the developer. He's not interested in dragging this out. I don't have any interest in dragging this out.
So I just want to make sure that the homeowners understand that it's not official until that resolution is approved. So I just want you to be fully... So I just want you to be fully cognizant of that. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, you, um, you just said you didn't wanna drag this out. I think Mr. Meryl said that it goes before Daytona Beach on Tuesday, tomorrow? This is Tuesday, Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, tomorrow, and then two weeks. So it works perfectly with you guys keeping this on your next agenda. Then we get it all done in one fell swoop.
Well, you, you're not gonna like this, but I'm less concerned with, I know you aren't, holding you up than doing what's right for the citizens. Can you put that, uh, slide up there? This is a picture of the entire project again. Have you driven ninety-two in the last week?
This morning.
Okay, is it clear now? Cause it was, it was flooded going west. You couldn't go west.
Sure.
And all the traffic was moved over to the eastbound lane. It's already flooded. This is eight hundred and fifty acres. And it's, um, right now, it's open land. It's still, it's flooding, but there's, there is land that will receive water. Once this is done, I see, I think there is a, a giant, um, stormwater pond somewhere. But we're talk-
There'll be more.
We're talking about three million square feet of distribution centers. And I, what keeps rolling around in my mind is that, is that what Volusia County wants to become, twenty-six thousand trips? Does Volusia County wanna be known as the distribution center, the warehouse center of, of the southeast, providing fifteen dollar an hour jobs or, or whatever they are? I would, I would-
Can I say yes?
Oh, you can say yes.
Just wanna make sure I had that.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, obviously, I disagree. I hear the moans on either side of me, so I, I'm probably alone here. But I, I want new jobs in Volusia County. I don't wanna be known as the warehouse capital of the world. I don't wanna be known that you can't get out in the streets because of the amount of semi-trucks everywhere. You're talking about thousands and thousands of trips of semi-trucks. And we're all supposed to embrace, is that the only kind of business we can draw to Volusia County? I, I just, um, I read three thousand truck tips, truck trips per day. It, to, to me, what I would prefer is that we did a sense of the council and sent it to Daytona Beach and said, "Please don't do this to us."
Jeff, can I intervene and tell you?
Mr. Pryor, we're overstepping our boundaries here. We are overstepping our boundaries, and you're making this a political speech. It's time to quit this. This is a Daytona Beach project, and, and you're putting everybody up here in a lurch, and it's not the time to do it.
I'm sorry, if you feel in a lurch. Everything we do is political. We ran as politicians to represent our constituents, and I will continue to do that.
Hey, Jeff, can I just say, sorry to interrupt, but, uh, as a fourth-generation resident of Volusia County, I appreciate what you're saying. But I, much like that previous item that you were talking about, what can or can't we do? This one, even though it's, it's a Daytona Beach thing, Daytona Beach approved this six or seven years ago. All we're doing is adding some workforce housing, which I hope you guys like. That's all that's happening here from a land use and a zoning standpoint. We're just talking about where to connect things here, not whether you do it or not. It's already been long ago decided upon.
Eight hundred and fifty acres, twenty-six thousand trips of semi-trucks.
All approved.
Okay, I'll, I'll be glad to stand alone and say, I don't think that's good for Volusia County. I don't wanna be known as that kind of a, of a county. Ben Johnson, you wanted to speak again?
This is a project that's hidden away behind trees. One of the issues that we have in Volusia County is our taxes are backwards on the residential instead of industrial. And, and this is something right here that gives us a tax base, doesn't particularly add so much on citizens, it, but it does add us a tax base and not residential that we're bringing the people in here. Uh, true, yes, it does bring some people in, but same token, I, I know in the past, people complained, and we've looked at it, and we're about sixty, forty, or somewhere in that neighborhood on taxes, residential to commercial, and we need to be about just the opposite direction. And this is the sort of thing that will bring us tax base in here to kind of correct that situation. And once again, it's not sitting out there, and I know in some places, we see all these industrial centers sitting right along the edge of the interstate. And, and that's when you really, that's when it's really known to what it is versus then putting it in an area out of the way. And then, like I said, it's already approved by the city of Daytona. We have no say-so or no choices in that.
It's, I thought it was going before the city council tomorrow.
So, yeah, I, I meant to be clear on that. What we're doing is we've added twenty-something acres on the front there where we're gonna put, if you look at the right-hand, lower right-hand side, we're adding some workforce housing. We, we acquired some additional acreage. That's what we're bringing to the table, and some commercial in the front, which is already zoned for and appropriate. So the, the eight hundred and fifty acres of industrial has been approved. We're adding the little bit that you see in the bottom right-hand corner. Tomorrow night.
Well, in, in my opinion, that's too bad. I, we, Ben, you are exactly right. We need more businesses here, and what this does is sets us up as the warehouse capital of the southeast. That's what will come. That's what'll keep coming. And I think we could do much better than that with the kind of businesses we get in with, with high-tech jobs and, it's, to me, this is a, is a travesty, and I, I, I can't vote for it. Uh, we have a motion on the floor with an amendment. Let's vote on the amendment for the appropriate signage and the cul-de-sack on the east side.
Yes, so, if, if you don't mind me restating it, just so we're clear with what we're doing. You're directing us to take a look at breaking Old Deland Road east of their access road, get rid of any notations to Fire Tower Road, any of that aspect tied to their access road, create with the two parties a timing for said to occur. Uh, we would also, uh, establish, uh, a no-truck traffic, uh, zone for that eastern cul-de-sack road segment, and, uh, make the modifications as appropriate for those two items. The connection to the west would continue to be in place as it was shown on the plan or as it needs to be reasonably modified during the final engineering.
Yeah.
That?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amendment carries seven to zero. I voted, I vote for that because I think it gives you the, the best protection that you can get. We were just told it's coming. There's nothing that can be done. I disagree with that. I always think there's something that can be done. I think this is, is a travesty. Um, now we have the, um, the motion as amendment to vote on. Motion was made by, uh, Councilman Lowry and second by Johnson. Did anybody restate that motion?
No.
No.
Brendan, remember, he did it.
Right. And that was amendment. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you for coming in, the three residents that are greatly affected by this. All right, Tad, you're here for the next part of this. Same property, item five, proposed vacation.
Yes, sir. Again, Tad Caysbeer, County Engineer. Uh, this is a requested vacation of a section of Fire Tower Road, just the south of Old Deland Road. The developer property owner owns both sides of Fire Tower Road, and, uh, they are petitioning for the vacation of this particular segment. Uh, county staff is recommending approval. Uh, we do, do not want, uh, as we just discussed, the, we're gonna have an intersection just immediately to the east of this on Old Deland Road with the proposed access road. We don't want to, for traffic purposes, safety purposes, have two intersections right on top of each other, coupled with the fact that Fire Tower Road is not in the, the best shape overall. It doesn't match up very well with Old Deland Road. We certainly don't want a bunch of through traffic moving through that area. Certainly more than capable of handling the two residences on the western side of a portion that would not be vacated, certainly not appropriate for any other traffic cutting through that area. So, uh, staff is recommending approval of the vacation.
Second.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Lowry. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? One per hour. Motion carries, uh, six to one. Item six, internal audit of inmate trust fund.
Five.
I said six.
I'm sorry. Change the number? I saw tower. Sorry. Coffee, coffee, please.
Jonathan Edwards. All right.
Yep, Mr. Check, I'd like to just, uh, open the item.
Please.
Yeah, uh, first off, just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Edwards. His hard work on this, uh, audit, and, uh, we, uh, we go through the presentation. I just would like council to know, uh, we've worked, uh, hard in a lot of these items. Uh, probably ninety-five percent of them have, uh, either already been addressed or are in processes of being addressed. And, uh, thank everybody for, uh, their hard work in going into this. We'll, um, have comments as they come along, as he goes through or at the end of his presentation. Donna?
All right. Good morning, Councilmembers. Jonathan Edwards, internal auditor. And today, I am presenting the internal audit report of the inmate trust fund. Uh, the audit scope was from January first, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or two calendar years. The purpose was to perform audit procedures to gain a reasonable degree of assurance that the county has controls in place to efficiently and effectively operate the inmate trust fund and that the inmate funds are accounted for, maintained, and safeguarded. Also, that the county was in compliance with laws, resolutions, policies, and guidelines, and to test transactions, um, for accuracy and that there are proper controls in place over receipts and disbursements, and review staff's determination, impact, and any changes in procedures regarding the inmate's concern over account receivable balances. To accomplish these objectives, we reviewed resolutions, laws, policies, and procedures, reviewed and understood internal controls, and interviewed staff, and tested deposits into and disbursements out of inmate funds. During twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-one inmates processed in and out of the corrections facility. There were over one point eight million transactions processed, which include deposits, commissary purchases, medical charges, and other disbursement. We selected seventy-five inmates to test, and we randomly selected fifty of those inmates, and based on a cursory review of the transactions, we also judgmentally selected twenty-five inmates. Of those seventy-five inmates, there were twenty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine transactions. We set the sample at slightly more than one percent, which gave us three hundred and thirty-three transactions to test. Table one in the report lists all the transactions by category, as well as the ones selected for testing. And for today's presentation, I broke the report into three main areas. The first one being issues over the inmate account balances and statutes, the second over procedures over the day-to-day operations, and the third, concerns on issues that were infrequent but should be addressed. The county must provide certain services to inmates regardless of their ability to pay, for example, medical and dental services. Florida statute allows counties to place a lien against inmate's cash account to provide payment in the event sufficient funds become available later. However, the statute requires that the debt be discharged three years after the date it was incurred. In addition to medical and dental charges, the county was placing a restitution charge on the inmate's account if they caused damage to county property, or if the inmate caused medical claims to another inmate. However, these restitution charges were never adjudicated through the court system, but staff placed a lien on the inmate's account balance. In two thousand seventeen, the corrections director stopped this practice, but those balances remained on the inmate's account as owed to the county. For inmates who had account balances owed, staff was applying half of any future deposits toward their debt balance. This included any federal stimulus monies received during the pandemic. In the fall of last year, an inmate contacted a council member regarding this issue and believed the county was noncompliant with statute. After several weeks and not satisfied with the corrections response, the council member discussed the issue with the county manager, the deputy county manager, and the CFO. They assigned a senior finance staff member and assistant attorney to assess the issue and determine the impact. The council member contacted me the next morning for awareness of the issue, and I attended a few initial meetings and felt confident staff was able to assess the issue, determine any impact, and make necessary changes to the inmate banking procedure. I was already working on the twenty-twenty-two audit plan, and inmate trust fund was one of the high-risk areas identified, so I was sure that this area would be audited during twenty twenty-two. Finance staff reviewed deposits over six hundred dollars that were received within the last two years, and if the inmate had any debt balances older than three years. Six hundred dollars was used, as it was generally the incremental amount the inmates received from the stimulus. After their review was completed in January of twenty-two, uh, January of this year, staff refunded twelve inmates that met the criteria, which totaled eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. They also changed the policies to remove debt after three years and wrote off inmate balances. When we conducted our audit, we found one inmate who met the criteria, however, was inadvertently missed by staff, and that inmate is owed one thousand eight hundred and one dollar. As I mentioned, finance staff reviewed inmates with deposits greater than six hundred dollars. However, there were other inmates who had deposits less than six hundred dollars, and they had balances owed to the county. And those balances were not reviewed by finance. Of the seventy-five inmates we selected for auditing, we found six inmates that were due a refund. Three of the inmates we tested were included in the review that finance staff, without council approval. Anything above that requires council approval. In January twenty twenty-two, in an effort to meet the statute, the CFO directed staff to write off the inmate balances older than three years. The county wrote off over five hundred and twelve thousand dollars that impacted over ten thousand seven hundred inmates. To understand the magnitude of this write-off, we categorized the balances within ranges as shown on the table. We noted the following in the audit. That four of the seventy-five inmates we tested had debt balances that were less than three years old, and these balances were included in the write-off. This means that the county may have been able to collect the balances in the future. Staff did not conduct a detailed review of inmate transactions to determine when the debt was incurred prior to writing off the debt. Six inmates had individual account balances over five thousand dollars, and these six balances were not approved by county council per the two thousand twelve policy. The two thousand twelve policy, which was approved by council, required individual counts, um, over five thousand be approved by council. The minutes from that meeting indicate that staff at that time proposed twenty-five thousand dollars, but council felt that was too high and brought the balance down to five thousand dollars. The minutes, um, indicate that the policy was for fiscal year two thousand twelve and going forward.
Donna?
Yes?
Do you mind if we just, um, so that we don't keep going past and while you're talking about it, we, if you could go back to the last slide real quick, just, um, so I just wanna be clear, um, we're saying that five hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars was in violation of the state statute, correct, for the?
No.
And we're pulling it, or?
No, so, i- in, in an effort to meet the statute, that we weren't, so the CFO directed council, or directed staff to write off the, the debt that was owed to the county, and that totaled five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Some of it was within three years, some of it was older than three years.
But in order to meet the state statute, that's what we wrote off?
Mm-hmm. In August of twenty twenty, the council approved ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen, which is briefly titled Purchasing and Settlement Thresholds. The ordinance increases the county manager's purchasing threshold from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. It also authorized the county manager to settle claims filed with the county's risk management program for up to fifty thousand dollars after consultation with the county attorney, along with any required evaluation by the risk management committee. And this threshold, this threshold increased from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. It also authorized the county manager to settle claims of the county up to fifty thousand dollars. The actual ordinance does not provide examples or define what claims of. However, the agenda item gives example of a damaged claim to a county vehicle. The discussion for this agenda item during the August twenty twenty council meeting focused on the purchasing threshold, and most discussion was on the settlement of the claims, as there was some confusion on what the risk committee and council would approve. There was no discussion or information provided to council on approving claims of the county. There was no indication or discussion that the two thousand twelve write-off policy would be changing. The county attorney and the CFO contend that the twenty twenty ordinance supersedes the two thousand twelve policy, and they believe the twenty twenty- two thousand and twelve policy, and they believe the twenty twenty ordinance allowed management to approve up to fifty thousand dollars, not five thousand dollars. However, I disagree. If the intent was for, if the intent for the twenty twenty ordinance was to change the two thousand and twelve policy, this should have been discussed during the council meeting and made clear that this authority was changing.
Jonathan, can you pause one second? Ben, did you want to ask a question now or wait till the end?
No, I want to make a statement. That fifty thousand dollars, I mean, we, if we start saying, you know, from what I recall, that was allowing the county manager to do away with any claim under fifty thousand dollars. It did such as a patrol car. But we can't, if we're going to have to do that, we're going to have to take and go through a list that'll be about two days long. I think this council, the legislative intent of this council was to allow the county manager to do away with any claims under fifty thousand dollars. That's my recollection of it. I may be wrong, but that was my recollection, and I think the council needs to weigh in a little bit on this, just as a, if that's what they recall or not, but that's mine.
Michael Dyer.
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, and your ordinance that you adopted in twenty twenty did legally give the authority to staff to write off claims of fifty thousand dollars.
And that's our attorney speaking.
And that, and that was done by a ordinance, not resolution. And all your ordinances that you adopt, you have a standard clause that any conflicting resolution or ordinance is superseded by what you more recently had.
Barb, do you want to ask a question here?
I just, I just want to support what's being said. That is, my understanding of the approval was, it was at his discretion, a claim can be a write-off, it could be, you know, a claim, an insurance claim, or anything of that nature. That was my impression of the vote that I took.
Billy Wheeler.
Yes, I wanted to also confirm that was my recollection of that vote.
Danny Robbins.
Absolutely, one hundred and ten percent. That is how I understood it, and in your verbiage too, something I picked up on that we can't discount, is you had said you may have been able to collect balances. That also means we may not have been able to collect the balance well, so they have the authority.
All right, and I would say that from an accounting standpoint, claims in dealing with insurance is different than claims of a write-off of a council.
I believe our attorney supersedes what you think on that, Mr. Edwards.
I'm bringing it to your attention, though. All right, we'll switch gears and talk about balances where the county owes inmates the money. Florida statute requires any unclaimed monies returned into the Florida Department of Financial Services after one year, and this is known as dis-treatment process. This is also known as the unclaimed funds and is searchable on the state's website. Each month, correction staff was generating a report that listed all inmates that had balances in their account. A sample of one page of the report is on the screen. It is the November twenty twenty report, which was sixty-eight pages long. It lists each inmate separately, their current status, the date of their last release, and the account balance. This report was not reviewed by correction staff, but it was instead given to the accountant within the accounting division. This report was also not being reviewed by the accountant during the monthly reconciliation process. You'll notice the date, July twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen, many times on this report. That is the date that the core system or the inmate banking system was implemented, and the inmates were actually released prior to that date. We wanted to understand the makeup of the old inmate balances to determine if there were small balances or mid to large balances. As seen on the screen, there were ninety inmates who had balances greater than fifty dollars with an average balance of a hundred and sixty-one dollars in their account. There were five hundred and six inmates who had balances between ten and fifty dollars with an average balance of twenty-two dollars in their account, and so on. As shown on this table using the November twenty twenty report, there were seven hundred and seventeen inmates with balances totaling over twelve thousand five hundred dollars that originated from two thousand and fifteen and years prior. There were thirty-one of these inmates who had individual balances over fifty dollars, which totaled six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. In total, there were one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven inmates who were owed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Ninety of those inmates had individual balances over fifty dollars, which totaled fourteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. We knew the monthly report was not being reviewed, but we wanted to understand what caused these balances to accumulate, so we performed a root cause analysis on these ninety inmates. We pulled the transactions for these ninety inmates that had individual balances over fifty dollars, and we were able to identify four trends or reasons for the balances accumulating. The largest percentage was due to the check never being issued to the inmate upon their release. In discussions with staff, they indicated that some inmates are embarrassed and are ready to leave the premises immediately upon their release. And that makes sense when the balances are small, but for this analysis, we are looking at balances over fifty dollars in their account. The second highest percentage was that the inmate did not pick up the check upon their release, which is slightly different. Sometimes there might be a check printing error, and inmates are told to come back the following day for their check from the front desk. In these cases, the inmate never showed up. Another cause we identified was that staff never recorded the inmate's release in the core banking system, meaning the inmate was released, but there was no record in the system leaving the inmate's balance on the book. The other trend we noted was that the check was voided or lost and was never reissued to the inmate. We found that the correction staff failed to research their balance. During the audit, when we were asking questions to staff regarding these balances, staff issued checks to the inmate for their account balances. This was done in April of this year. Included in the report are just a few examples of the circumstances we noted. For example, one inmate was incarcerated for only two hours in two thousand and fourteen and had a balance of thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. A check was never issued to this inmate. Another inmate was incarcerated for only seven hours in two thousand and nineteen and had a balance of one thousand three hundred and eight dollars. A check was issued upon their, upon their release, but it was voided two weeks later with a notation that the inmate lost the check, but there were no further transactions or documentation of reissuing the check to the inmate. Due diligence was not being performed on the inmate balances, and the county was at fault for not reviewing or distributing these balances to the state. After I brought these balances to the attention of staff, they did issue checks to the inmates in April of this year. However, the value of the inmate balances in two thousand and twenty-two was not considered. For example, the inmate who was incarcerated for only two hours in two thousand and fourteen had a balance of three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, but in today's value, that'd be three thousand eight hundred and seven dollars by using the CPI index. We scheduled it out for the ninety inmates over fifty dollars, and that total would be two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and I believe the county's general fund could have provided this increase in value. We also noted that many of the checks issued to the inmates in April were returned in the mail because the addresses on file were several years old. We randomly selected four of these return checks and performed a simple internet search based on the inmate's name, birth date, and former address. With very little effort, we were able to find potential updated addresses for these four. As I alluded to on earlier slides, monthly reconciliations were not adequately being performed. There are three ledgers involved in the inmate trust fund. You have the day-to-day ledger or system called the CORE that is used by the correction staff. This records all details of the inmate banking transactions, its their deposits, their commissary orders, medical charges, et cetera, and it's a specialized system meant to handle inmate banking. And then you have the county's general ledger, which is used countywide to record all financial transactions of the county. Regarding inmate banking, the general ledger and CORE do not automatically interface with each other. Therefore, each month, staff would record manual journal entries into the CGI system based on reports that corrections provided out of the CORE system. Therefore, only summary entries of deposits, checks written to inmates, and inmate transactions were recorded. And then finally, in place, the bank ledger. The bank records when deposits are made and when inmates would cash their check. Reconciliation was being performed by the accountant in the accounting division, but only between the bank and the general ledger. A reconciliation between CORE and the bank or the general ledger was never performed. Proper reconciliation provides management with accurate reporting, the ability to spot anomalies, fraud, or errors while still in the timeframe to be managed and resolved, and it helps cross-check documents to ensure everything's recorded and updated. I believe if these reports were being properly reviewed each month, many of the issues found in this audit may have been cleared up several years ago. This is a classic example of silos in government and why teamwork and understanding between departments is crucial. In the areas I just covered, I had several recommendations to improve controls and help ensure statutes are being followed, and staff, like Mr. Reckonold said, have taken steps to address many of these and have already implemented or in the process of implementing those. On recommendation number six here, the CFO included a cost-benefit analysis in his response and believes that the cost outweighs the benefit, and this relates to the balance inmates owed within the three years that were included in the write-off. On the other recommendations, they agreed in implementing. And on these recommendations, staff believed they performed sufficient due diligence on the checks issued earlier this year. They also disagreed in principle, considering the present value of the inmate's account. However, they were going to make the recommended increase. The rest of these recommendations, they agreed with. That's the first part of the report. I can move on, or if you want to ask questions on that part?
We have a few questions. Barb, I don't know if that's an old...
It is, but I just want to say...
You'll use it?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate you doing the work and the transparency that it's bringing and just bringing it, bringing it forward and giving staff an opportunity to respond to it and make the corrections. Unfortunately, not overly surprised that there's some challenges in that environment. I know there's been a lot of, you know, turnover and a variety of changes going on in that system, so I'm just glad we're getting in front of it, making the corrections, and being able to move forward, and that's what we hired you to do. So even when there, your perspective or you think differently about how something should be done, I respect you bringing that to the forefront and giving us that opportunity to clarify for you what those expectations are and being able to move forward, because that's, that's why we're doing this. So thank you for your hard work.
Danny Robbins.
Thanks, Sharon. Tacko, Barb said, you know, great, you're picking up the slack, you know, this, this stuff is going to happen, but put things in total perspective, on the other hand, how many inmates do we have roughly circulating through our system a year? Do we know? What's our batting average?
There's twenty-two thousand over two years, so about twelve thousand or so a year.
How many, how many boo-boos did we come up with, or did you come up with? Ninety?
There were ninety inmates over fifty dollars that were, there were ninety inmates that had balances over fifty dollars.
Okay. We can always do better, but we're doing pretty damn good, and that's because of the teamwork, as you expressed earlier, so good job there for picking that up, and Mark and George as well, because when you really put things in perspective, there's a lot of turnover, and this stuff is going to happen. So I think we just need to keep that in mind. Thanks.
Heather Post.
Yes, so I think when we had, we had first spoken, Jonathan, you had said that this was actually an area within county administrations that is the most likely to have issues. So certainly not surprising in any administration, I think, to, to find some, some things that could be worked on, for sure. I would like to point out, though, because I don't want us to have the wrong perception from what was just said, you didn't look over twelve thousand counts, correct?
No.
Right, so just as when it was initially brought up, we had finance, and they just pulled, pulled a very, very small number out of the hat to check those small numbers, and, and in the internal auditing, that is what you do. So when you're saying that there is however many, that is not out of the, out of the total population, so comparing those two numbers is really not, really not a good, accurate way to do it. When, when we're saying, hey, out of this many, this is the only errors that are there in this category, it certainly gives a good representation, but it's not, not an accurate understanding when we, as elected officials, are saying in comparison. So I just want to fully...
So like on my next slide, I do try and do that where I give you, so like on this one eleven out of seventy-five or fifteen, so I always try to give you that percentage or extrapolate for, so you can kind of get a grasp of what the magnitude may be.
And a second aspect of this is, I know we've, we have, we've had some changeover with the CORE program, I guess you'd call it. So that was in twenty fifteen where we changed over, correct?
They changed from an older system to CORE in twenty fifteen, and then this summer they changed from CORE to EEF system.
So, so I would say to George and Suzanne, as we're doing these things, and then I, I know that we had a change in the administrative staffing as well, we had Laura Bowns come in in, what was that, twenty seventeen? So as we have these changes in people that oversee these areas, and as we have changes in the computer systems, those are great times to be going through and actually doing assessing. I know that we had, we had that discussion about security. You know, if we have a new security guy come in, an assessment should be done. If we have a new, a new anyone come in, right, an assessment should be done from their viewpoint.
Right, and often the new person coming in...
Different perspective.
Right, and they, but they may demand that, you know, to make sure they're getting a clean slate, and, but yes, it's a, as we've gone through this process and we're learning, that'll become more and more standard. And I do want to agree with you one hundred percent that, you know, one of the reasons we're making these changes is because these numbers are not de minimis. You know, when he's finding it and it hits a percentage, you know, it's, it's not one in twenty-eight thousand, you know, he's got, he has established a test, and based on that percentage, we know, yes, there's, there's greater. So that's why the changes, we're agreeing to almost everything he has because of that fact, because we do recognize, yes, you know, these are procedures that have to be updated, fixed, and added in some cases. So again, and that's part of really, we're going to always be self-assessing. That's something that we have to do, because the world changes around us, technology changes, the people change, so it's critical that we constantly have that process. And Jonathan's been a really good addition, because he works with us, and you got to look at it like it's internal quality control. It's all we constantly are assessing our product and what we're doing and helping each other. And his point about the silos, we're trying to break those silos down, so again, we are a team here. We'll talk a little bit about that, maybe on my time, when we get to the storm a little bit of how we all come together, but the idea is, is to be all together all the time. And so this helps with that. And again, what's happening here, believe me, we take those lessons throughout the whole organization to make sure that, hey, you know, are we up to date with our software or other things in other areas as well.
And so that's the, really the broader point and of the, of the whole discussion, right? And one of the things that I've been pushing as we move forward is that... I think there are some people that looked at this initially and just said, well, it's an inmate that, you know, we, that didn't get the appropriate amount of funds back. Big deal, but when you look at it from the bigger perspective and the changes that it's actually causing throughout the entire administration, I think, and the insistence there, and a lot of things, I think it's very important that we listen to you in these areas, and you're bringing up quite a, quite a few things, and I think it's very important for us not to fall back into the culture of, well, you know, this is how we do things. We hired you for a reason. We've, we've already, in one of the prior council meetings, shuffled you back under the control of, of the general manager, so, or not general manager, county manager, sorry. But I think it's very important that we do listen to, to the suggestions that you have, because it's, it's not pointing out the negatives necessarily in the county, it's, because the people underneath... It's because the people underneath, you know, we have really good people. They're just doing the standard SOP or the standard culture that's been there for however long, right? And it's up to us as leaders to provide them the resources and the tools and the opportunity to be successful in their role and to note these things. And then we move forward and we're doing better. So I think it's, I'm hoping we're looking at the bigger picture as a council and we're seeing that this is not just making sure that the inmates receive the funding that they have, but also that we're looking at it from the bigger picture and really putting significance on the suggestions that you are making as the professional in your role as well.
Billy Wheeler?
Thank you. I'm agreeing with just about everything that's up here. Jonathan, I thank you for putting the time in. I know you have more presentation here. This is exactly what we were asking for, you know. We wanted to see any areas that we can improve. I think we've all stated that, you know, there was no signs of any corruption or anything. These were just things that through the process, through years and years of change. And I do at this time want to just thank Warden Smith for all of his efforts being in there right now, trying to get all the answers and doing all the things he's doing. But I think this is exactly what we need to have. And staff is so good about seeing, when it's brought to their attention, things where we can improve. Everybody here wants that, you know, and we want this transparency. That's why this whole discussion is totally open to everybody. Yes, there's things that were found wrong and we're making those corrections. And there's some things that we may not agree on, but the fact is, we have the information now. And I appreciate that and I appreciate staff because I know you're already on it. And, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And again, thank you.
It's not something we're just ignoring and saying, okay, we got the message. And it's already being, it's already being worked on.
And I'm glad you brought up, you know, Warden Smith. But I also want to thank Warden Faircloth and I also want to thank Mike Jones from...
And Director Flowers as well, yeah.
And right, everybody that was involved and Assistant Director Bounds. All worked together, but also I have to say, we bought in people from our revenue area. Mr. Jones. And he is really, he pretty much single-handedly loaded in this new software that will help with a lot of this as well. And made sure, when you do, when you do new software, often it is a very good time to review all of your procedures and processes because you don't want to keep repeating, you know, the old way and just put it in a new form. You know, that's your opportunity to take a look at what you're doing. And we've been very successful in this organization of doing that. And those are your best, those are your best software upgrades is when you also review all of your systems like we were doing. And so therefore it reflects the new needs that the organization has and the most updated procedures. So this is another case of where we're doing that here. So again, a very good team effort. And this is the way, sometimes you just gotta take a look. And it might be a little painful, but when you're done, you're much better off and you've got a better product. And that's what we have today.
All right. So the second portion of the report is on the day-to-day operations that were noted during the audit. The contract with Airmark, who provided commissary services, required that they provide delivery and obtain a signed receipt from the inmate on all commissary purchases. We found 11 of the 75 inmates did not sign for their commissary purchases. And additionally, we found that if inmates returned items, the return slips were not signed. Again, maintaining adequate and complete records minimizes the risk of fraud and mishandling. Management agreed with the recommendations and the new banking system has better controls in place and there should not be an issue on this matter. We found nine of the 75 inmates tested had transactions placed on their account after being released from jail. A few examples included, an inmate who placed a $135 order on a Friday, was released the following Tuesday and never received their ordered items. A return credit was posted to their account 90 days later with the inmate being issued a check at that time. Another inmate was booked and released in February of 2016. In July of 2016, the inmate received a $40 money order in the mail, which posted to their inmate account. The $40 remains on the inmate's account even though they have not been reincarcerated at our jail. Another inmate placed an order on April 4, 2021 and released the following day. Forty-five business days later, they received a return credit of $9.33. The balance remains on their account, which is owed to the inmate. It was clear that staff's not routinely generating or analyzing reports to investigate the inmate account balances. And staff are working with the new vendor to see if it can alert staff of pending transactions before it's posted to their account, such as the deposit, like the money order in the mail. And staff are developing procedures to compare lists of released inmates to their outstanding balances. We identified instances of backup documentation on inmate purchases not being retained. And we noted one inmate was charged $20 to replace their ID badge, but the standard cost is $10. There were no records to substantiate the charge or why the inmate was charged double the normal cost. We also noted that staff would freeze inmate bank accounts without any documentation or written approval. Sometimes accounts were frozen for a few minutes or other times for several days. Sometimes inmate accounts are frozen if they're still under the county's custody but have been transferred to another facility such as a hospital. Other times, accounts may be frozen for disciplinary actions, including limited commissary privileges. Corrections policy requires that reports and permanent logs be prepared and maintained for each inmate assigned to special disciplinary units. The procedures to freeze and unfreeze inmate accounts require different approvals, including the warden and corrections director. The risk of fraud occurring has increased significantly when documentation is not maintained or retained to support the transaction. Staff agreed with the recommendations or developing procedures and training of staff. We noted 15 inmates of the 75 we tested did not have booking record transactions in the Core system. We also noted four were somehow released twice in the Core system and two were not properly released at all in the system and had balances owed to the inmate. And quickly I'll walk through the booking process so you can understand. When inmates are booked in the jail, all personal belongings the inmate has on hand are placed on a piece of cardboard and all items are photographed, placed in a vacuum sealed bag and labeled with the inmate's assigned booking number. The inmate signs a receipt acknowledging the transfer of their belongings to the jail. If inmate has any money on hand, it is counted, verified and signed by the inmate agreeing to the amount. The intake officer deposits all cash into the inmate's account via the Core system. If the inmate does not have any money on hands, the intake officer logs into Core and books the inmate with a $0 balance. If the cash is damaged, meaning that it's torn or wet, or if the intake officer believes the cash might be counterfeit, the intake officer places the cash into an envelope with the inmate's information on it and drops it into a locked vault. The intake officer enters a total into the Core system and the intake officer also notifies the account clerk. We found that the account clerk counts the vault every two to three weeks or when the balance accumulated over $1,000. The policy handbook did not dictate how often the vault should be counted and verified, which raises the risk that counterfeit monies are being used. It may be more difficult to investigate differences if there's several weeks after occurring. Feature cash deposits in the vault may also be damaged. And the longer money remains in the vault, the more susceptible it is to being misplaced. By having the booking and release transactions properly recorded in the Core system, it also helps protect the corrections officer in cases where the intake, or where inmates may dispute their balances. Upon being released from jail, inmates report to the property room to collect their belongings and receive a check for any balances remaining on their account. If there is no money, the officers enter a zero balance entry on their account, which essentially closes out their Core account under that booking number. A few examples that we noted. An inmate was booked and released the same day with $153. It was properly recorded in the Core upon their booking, but when they were released a few hours later, there was no release record transaction. As such, the inmate has a balance owed and still remained on their account as of July of this year. Another inmate was booked with $49 and released the following day, but there was no release records entered. In April, when we were inquiring of what happened, staff issued a check to the inmate. However, the check was immediately voided with a notation that the check printed on white paper and not texted. As of July of this year, no further transactions were performed and the inmate is still owed $49. Staff agreed with the recommendations to establish procedures to at least count the vault weekly and retrain staff on properly booking and releasing the inmate. If an inmate loses their check upon release, a stop payment is placed on the check. This immediately notifies the bank who voids the check and it cannot be cashed or processed further. Staff were making inmates wait up to 60 days to reissue a check. It may appear that this process is punitive to inmates who may be reliant on these monies upon their release. Extending the reissue so long, both inmates and staff may forget to follow through by reissuing the new check, which this may also be contributing to the large number of inactive inmates with account balances. Staff agreed to shorten the time from five to, agreed to shorten the time to five to seven days for reissuing the stop payment. And the county may be losing recruitment of inmate medical and dental bills due to slow inputting of these charges into the Core system. We noted a trend where medical charges were being applied to the inmate accounts after their release date. We noted four of the 75 inmates tested had medical charges placed on their account after being released. The contract with the provider requires that all charges be submitted daily, which is being done. However, they do not have access to the Core system and the charges must be entered by the account clerk. However, there's no backup or cross-training of staff to enter charges if the clerk is unavailable. There are various charges, but we found them to average about $13. When extrapolated to the possible 1,200 inmates that are impacted, the county's general fund may be losing out on approximately $17,000 on these charges. When the inmate is released and does not return to jail within the three years, the county's general fund eats this cost. Staff agreed with my recommendations and are establishing procedures for daily entry and cross-training of staff. As I mentioned, the Core system's used for the inmate banking system and the corrections management was not periodically reviewing the user accounts to ensure that the users are active and current employees of the corrections division. It was noted that employees are sharing login and password information even after the employees have terminated employment with the division. At the time of the audit, there were 444 total users in the system. 128 were inactive and 316 marked as active. Inactive users cannot access the system or make any modifications to transactions. They are listed as inactive so that the system can retain the history of the transactions they performed. Of the 316 active users, 79 were terminated employees. 20 had different usernames assigned, which means that usernames were being reassigned to different employees and were not unique. And 30 were assigned to the vendor. The terminated employees could perform many types of transactions in the system. 70 users had the ability to add and release inmates, void transactions and edit inmate personal information. Three of the terminated employees had full administrative rights in the system.
Tell them. Pause one second, please. Heather Post?
Yes, so question for George. Is this, is IT involved in this at all? Or is this specifically a corrections division computer area?
I'm gonna have Ryan, who has IT.
We're like security for this specific discussion, so about the terminated employees having access and that kind of stuff, is it...
There are systems that IT manages, like the Windows domain to log into your computer or your email. And then there are systems that are department-specific. This is a department-specific system. So while IT might have some administrator rights to administer the program, to like install patches and stuff like that, actual administration of users, when it's a department-managed system, is handled by the department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we compared the employee termination dates. Ryan's so tall. Okay, sorry. We compared the employee termination dates to the last login recorded in Core. There were two users who logged in after their termination date. In discussions with the correction staff, it was confirmed that employees were often sharing their login and password information. These two users could release inmates, void transactions, modify transaction notes, activate and deactivate inmates, add inmates and edit inmate personal information. These two users did not have admin rights. In May of this year, when we were asking questions, management did go ahead and deactivate all the terminated employees and removed all duplicate username. By not monitoring user access, which is required by the county IT policy, it does open the door for opportunities for misuse of computer systems while appearing to be for legitimate use. And the county's policy charges the departments with the responsibility of ensuring security is appropriate for the employees, the contractor and the vendor. Like I said, staff agreed with the recommendations and implemented procedures to review users and cross-reference to the human resource reports. And they were ensuring that usernames are unique and provide training during the rollout of the new system. In the policy and procedures handbook, which is available to employees on the Internet, it is marked as last updated on March 15, 2021. However, it contains several policies that were outdated. For example, the sections on the inmate banking, for example, the sections on the inmate banking reference a system that has not been in place since 2015. It will need to include the new inmate banking system that was implemented earlier this year. And staff agreed with this recommendation and the handbook is being updated. In the final area of the report is over the concerns noted during the audit. There were concerns noted regarding petty cash, but that has since been closed and no longer in use. The previous county managers wanted to track and invoice a state for unfunded mandate of housing state inmates. However, there's no agreement with the state and the recording and mailing as the invoice takes staff time. I recommended that the invoicing and mailing stop as this takes away from their time. And this data can also be pulled by public protection at any given time. And the county manager already directed staff to stop this invoicing. Annual reporting that is required and has not been done since 2018. And the Public Safety Coordinating Committee minutes had some issues with minutes not being posted and staff are working on correcting that. Based on the results of this audit, there was significant, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So just going back to the Public Safety Coordinating Committee, Coordinating Council. So again, this was a discussion that was brought up with them when I was chair, right? And several of the other committees and ensuring that the committees were following the state guidelines and the reporting and doing the minutes and then, in essence, actually on things and not just checking the box of what was required by the state for those committees or councils to do. So I'm seeing that we haven't actually shifted over on that. I was pulled off the Public Safety Coordinating Council by the last chair, but I'm seeing that we did not do that in this. So I'm hoping that we are looking at, again, at every committee that is state mandated, that council be a part of and that we're required to check the boxes and that we are fulfilling those.
Yep, we're updating all the training, excuse me, for minutes on all of the committees, one included. And again, when we see something like this, we try to also apply it broadly. So it's an area that definitely needs improvement and it's being done.
Good. All right, thank you.
Finally, based on the results of this audit, there was significant room for improvement in internal controls. As I've demonstrated today, the policies and procedures are updated. There's a large number of terminated employees with active user status and sharing of login information. There's a lack of awareness and non-compliance with state statutes regarding inmate account balances. There was a large percentage of inadequate documentation to support the services and charges to inmate accounts. Staff was not generating nor analyzing reports available in the inmate banking system. Controls were lacking over the monitoring and analyzing of inmate accounts through the bank statements. And there was a general lack of understanding and lack of management's assessment of the risk involved regarding inmate trust fund. The basic objectives of any organization, large or small, is to operate efficiently, effectively, safeguard assets and provide reliable information to those who need it and comply with the applicable constraints. Internal controls help management achieve those objectives. And there are five elements or pillars, as I like to call them, which are on the screen. I won't go into each one, as I've demonstrated, there were weaknesses identified in each of these areas. If there are any other questions you may have.
Are you satisfied with the response from staff?
Yes.
Are you confident that the corrections that you made are, there's still a couple that you're disagreeing on? You confident that that'll be worked out? And George, you're committed to making the changes?
And I want to say, I think we're only really disagreeing on, it really wasn't, it was over the procedure of writing down the debt. But as far as all of the running of the... But as far as, uh, all of the running of the, these accounts, I think we agree. So, there's really only one area that it's a disagreement of how we did something to fix it. So, uh, I just want that to, to be, uh, on the record here. And then, uh, in addition to not just being, we're committed, but we'll also have Jonathan back. So, that's part of his work, is he'll, he goes back after a period of time to see exactly how we're doing. So, between that and the fact that we'll be asking and other things that already happened, I feel very confident that, uh, it will be better.
Uh, Ben Johnson.
Yeah, I think this was the right thing, and I think it's a good job. The idea behind it is to find out where your weaknesses are. We found we had no theft, we had no fraud, which were very good. We found some weaknesses, it's pointed out. Corrections is, is working hard to, to work with you to make sure these are corrected. I, I think really we've done pretty good. I mean, it's, um, I, I do have one thing, I don't, you know, as for inmates and trying to track them down too far, you know, it's like me having a bank account. If I don't go back to my bank account, that's up to me to go find it. And it sum up to the, these prisoners that, if they have money owed to them, because so many of our prisoners are people who you can't hardly find. I mean, they, they're hard to find. They don't live in one place long. Um, they're not real responsible, so it's kind of tough to hunt them down. But I think overall, the idea behind what it was, has meant so much of it has been fixed that I see and taken care of little problems that could develop into big problems. Now you have some policies, procedures, ways to go, and some understanding. So, I think it, it's gone in the right direction.
Heather Post.
I'd be remiss if I didn't discuss corrections staff before ending this conversation. And I just wanted to, to be very clear that the people that work in our corrections division are outstanding individuals and they work very, very hard in their roles. And I think, again, just, just as we've seen in various divisions, it's just a matter of accountability and, and understanding from a management and a leadership perspective. When we have leadership over leadership over leadership over leadership over leadership, sometimes things get a little askew. And, and I know George and I have had much discussion on that over the years. And, um, we're really, the county administration is really moving forward to address a lot of those things in various areas. But I just want to commend, uh, the corrections staff and tell you that we are very thankful you're there. We hope that you stay a long time, for sure. And, uh, and we do support you. And we want to provide you the SOPs and the standards that you will be proud of to, um, to maintain your positions. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Jonathan's report by Johnson, second by Lowery. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, by like sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Jonathan, thank you, good work. And Russ Brown for the next two items. Back to the storm.
Russ Brown, Senior Assistant County Attorney. I don't think I'm doing the B, I'm doing the A, but.
You're doing A?
I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Uh, do it quick.
Good afternoon, County Chair, members of council. This is just the first extension for the local emergency declaration.
Move approval. Motion to approve by Lowery, second by Wheeler.
Yeah. This is your presence.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the extension is approved, seven to zero. Item six B, Clay Ervin, resolution allowing for the waiving of specific fees related to damages caused by Hurricane Ian.
Good afternoon, Clay Ervin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. In previous storm events, such as Matthew and Irma, the county council has authorized staff to waive fees for those who are coming in for storm damage-related permits and activities. These range from the building permit fees to a variety of other things. So, um, we are looking for approval of a resolution to authorize that for a period of thirty days.
Dr. Were you done?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that if, if there's extenuating circumstances that put beyond thirty days, we'll be back with an extension.
Okay. Does the motion still stand? Motion by Lowery, second by Gertman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. And the resolution is approved, seven to zero. Kevin Captain, community events.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of Council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So, we don't have any specific events other than national weeks. So, what we have so far to start out with is... Okay, no slides, that's okay. Uh, we have Fire Prevention Week, which is October ninth through the fifteenth. Uh, and, and one of the things that's cool about this week is Autumn Thurston is a firefighter with Volusia County Fire Rescue. And she created a virtual classroom that you can click on through volusia.org. It's very cool, it's very educational, targets a younger audience, and a tremendous amount of information that people can learn about Fire Prevention Week. So, we'll be doing some social media posts with it. And of course, you know, fire staff are engaged with that week. So, that's gonna be October ninth through the fifteenth. We also have on October twentieth, every year, we create awareness around Imagine a Day Without Water. And that's again, the twentieth, and we put some social media posts out, and, and they're basically tidbits of information for everyone to think about how important water is. And then also on, in October, the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, we have Mobility Week. And, uh, you'll see some advertisements through social media on behalf of Votran that we're working on. And again, just to remind everyone, when it comes to county events, volusia.org, if you click on the news, drop down of the county council or county calendar, there's all sorts of events that we keep up to date routinely. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
That we will go to public participation and, oh.
Mr. Chair, are, are we not doing any kind of hurricane update?
Yes, for, under my time.
Okay.
They're gathering here to, you'll hear from each of the areas.
Okay, that's what I was hoping for. Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side, not that dull. With regard to your development and you're looking into the, the development, I'm asking that we not use the word, um, what am I, moratorium. It has unintended consequences. Uh, the city of Daytona Beach used that twenty years ago, about. We had, um, several hurricanes and we were devastated. So, we were looking into things and they decided to use a moratorium on our beachside. It has been twenty years and we've got one building built in twenty years, all right? Seventeen had been canceled because of the moratorium. I'm asking that you don't do that. Secondly, um, we have in the city of Daytona Beach, a massive road system called I-95 and I-4. They are fantastic for distribution centers. It is to our benefit to have distribution centers at those locations. There are thousands of jobs and we need them. Not everybody can afford a very nice house and that kind of thing. So, I'm asking that, one, you update. You absolutely need to update what we have and what we're providing in our county. We are one of the larger counties in the state. We have plenty of land and developers are looking at us at this time. So, it is, one, a good time to look at the quality of life, look at our environment, our water, et cetera. One issue that we had no idea of years ago is flooding. There are areas in Daytona Beach that are four feet underwater on the simplest of rain. So, I'm asking you to just tell staff best quality, highest and best use of land, the best quality we can provide, because it may be expensive now, but it's gonna be a heck of a lot cheaper than the repairs in the future. So, if they have to bring that land up, and it's costly, but it's better than repairing in the futures. Again, rather than use the M-word, just let the staff know that these things are coming down the pike and it's not gonna be business as usual. We are gonna change things for the betterment of the future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, County Manager?
Okay, yes, thank you, Chair and Council. At this time, I would like to, uh, go ahead and give a, an overview of the storm. And I've asked the various department heads, just about every department, very active during the storm. So, uh, those that could make it are here, and I think they're all here, but if not, I'll cover whatever, uh, their area would have to offer. So, with that, I'm gonna have Kevin Captain come up. He's gonna kind of emcee the, um, the presentation as we go through with each of the... I will say, uh, I'm very proud of the response. The team came together flawlessly. Uh, this storm was different than many storms we've had. It formed relatively close to Florida and really, uh, is, is a good example of why you have to watch these storms and be very diligent, uh, because, you know, the track for this thing was, uh, for a long time heading to Tallahassee and it inched ever closer. And it kind of shows, I think, the challenge that these meteorologists have. However, you know, we have a duty to prepare and we prepared from, really, that before the storm ever had a name, we were, uh, out and making the preparations that we needed to make, both internally and then getting the word out. Now, uh, probably the busiest man in the organization right now, Jim Judge, who probably is really questioning, uh, his decision to come back, but thank God he did, he's done a great job. But, uh, he won't be here for this, but I'm sure he'll probably catch some of it. He's very busy right now with FEMA officials that are in the area as we speak. Uh, just one of the many things we have to take care of. But again, we came together, uh, and I also want to thank the sheriff, uh, I want to thank the property appraiser, uh, I want to thank the elections and tax collect, all those areas contributed. Either sent people to the CIC or they helped in some way. And of course, a very strong partnership with the sheriff, a lot of rescues and a lot of work were done with them. They're providing security in areas that people should not be going into now, because we've had people out of their homes. So, uh, the response continues and will continue, and that's something I like to remind everybody as well, that this is not as far from over for our folks. And, uh, and then on top of that, like is the case in all these storms, we've had our own, our own, uh, employees affected by this. And we're working hard with our HR department to help with housing. We have set up Volusia Cares, uh, system where employees can help each other. So, again, um, my hats and heart really goes out to, uh, the great team that we have here. And I'm always, uh, super proud of how hard we work and come together on these things. And I have to really thank them, because you don't even have to ask, they're out there ahead, uh, on many, many things. And, uh, it's usually a matter of trying to get them to go get some rest somewhere in between, and we have to kind of lock them out of the building and go home. So, do appreciate that. So, with that, I'm gonna have Kevin walk us through the various areas.
Thank you, Mr. Reckonwald. So, uh, just here, just kind of gives you an idea, the, uh, the storm obviously started coming around towards the, the fourth, third and fourth weeks of September and caused historic flooding. We have three confirmed deaths from the storm. Uh, there's two other deaths that have circumstances surrounding flood, uh, drowning that could be related to the storm, and those two cases are at the medical examiner's office under investigation. So, we'll be able to bring you more information on that. But, uh, as George indicated, our staff rose to the challenge, weathered the storm, and they did, bring their agame all the way, all the way in every effort. The Emergency Operations Center conducted a full activation. Today, they are now at a partial activation, but still with, with all the necessary parties and agencies cooperating. These are some shots of both the MAG room and the operations room, which is basically the hub of all the communications that take place. And, you know, if you get a chance to see it in action, which a lot of us had the privilege to see, it, it's so well orchestrated to see all those agencies be right there physically and be able to get answers, communicate, and be able to mobilize resources to people who need them. The Citizens Information Center has been open, they continue to be open. Right now, they're open from eight to six. Uh, they have taken more than six thousand calls total. Uh, it started off slow, of course, we ramped up, and, uh, they've been a tremendous resource. County staff, from the county manager staff to all the administrative staff throughout the county divisions, all participate in this pool. They take shifts. In fact, Jenna, who's our records manager, was one of the coordinators of, uh, the CIC in different shifts. So, definitely, we, we, we're in debt to all the hard work that they did. And they worked around the clock for many days and took a lot of calls and provided as many resources to callers and residents as much as possible. The sandbag distribution, uh, here it says we provided twelve thousand, as of today, it's, you can add another thousand to that. So, there's been a tremendous amount of sandbags. And also, with the coordination of all the sandbag distribution from our cities and municipalities, uh, that number's even much, much more higher. And we've been updating our PIN site as a result of that, when sandbag events have been popped up. So, emergency services, we can talk a little bit more about the Ocean Center and the sheltering, but the, it's been a great partnership with the school district. And, and as you see, Dr. Balgabin and Dr. Earl Johnson, Jr., the chief operating officer, uh, he, he was in the ops room with us the whole time, checking on sheltering and seeing what he could do to help us. And so, it was immense collaboration, coordination, and communication with the school district, as George said, with the sheriff's office and with every public partner.
Yeah, I, I have to add a little props to the school. They really came through. The superintendent attended, uh, some of the MAG meetings and, uh, and of course, Dr. Johnson was there, uh, pretty much the whole way through. So, uh, and I think we really, uh, worked well together to get it set up and do what we had to do, and then get broken back down and, and have a transitional plan, which has been one of the issues in the past. So, uh, I think we were able to move the people and change the sheltering in a manner that allowed them to, I think, be able to start school tomorrow. So, at least that's the latest information I, I have. So, they, uh, again, it's probably one of the smoother, um, times we've had working with them. I really appreciate their efforts, it was outstanding.
Thank you, George. They definitely were, were a pleasure to work with. But this here just talks about power outages. From, uh, right after the peak of the storm, Volusia County had as many as two-hundred-and-forty-seven customers, clients without power.
Thousand.
Thousand, thank you. Makes a big difference, doesn't it? Today, they're down to twenty-one thousand. And FPL, Duke, they were all right there in the ops room, at the table, coordinating, communicating. And to be able to do that, bring that number down in just a period of a few days after the storm, considering also all of the other power outages in the southern and southwestern portions of Florida that were affected by the storm, that's an amazing response, it really is. So, if you see a line, man or woman out there, thank them. So if you see a line, man or woman, out there, thank them. They've been working around the clock, and they've been doing a tremendous job. The FEMA assistance, as you know, that we've been designated for individual assistance and public assistance. As of this morning, 15,528 applications have been entered into the FEMA system for individual assistance. And yesterday, we got notification that the disaster assistance teams will be here in the county, going throughout the areas of the county that are damaged the most, and they'll be reporting back to our Emergency Operations Center and our FEMA representatives. So they'll kind of serve as that liaison for the residents in need. And the application for assistance still remains up on volusia.org. It's still available tangibly at the libraries for people who don't have internet access. So there's several different platforms. We also have on volusia.org the Spanish versions to be able to offer the application process. And FEMA also has that capability for our Hispanic population. So lots of different routes there. I just want to touch on the community information response. On this slide here, you see the sliders that we put together, and those are just basically images on the main page that pop up that you can click, and it takes you right to our PIN site. Our PIN site, as you know, is the acronym for Public Information Network. And just as of today, from the start of September 26th, to the PIN site alone, we've had 131,000 visitors. That's amazing. And just to volusia.org in the same period, to the page, we've had over a quarter of a million visitors. So it, the amount of people going to get that information is amazing. And I will say that all of our public information officers in our Community Information Division have been mobilized and basically working around the clock since the storm came to gather and glean information from our public information officers from the cities and municipalities, and constantly update that PIN page in real time, so that anybody who needs to know about the debris pickup or the sandbag distribution event in a certain city or municipality, they can go to the PIN page as that primary source and get that information in real time. So my sincere thanks to our team for being able to be so nimble and agile to be able to get that site updated. Press conferences, we had six live conferences with a cumulative sum of 74,000 views. And that was also offered with American Sign Language interpretation. Facebook, social media, we had, we used all five different platforms: Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor, and YouTube. So we created a little branding graphic for all of the information related to the storm. And as of today, with the 64 posts that we put out on the emergency management page, which is the primary site that we like to use during an activation, we got a hit of over a million, million views. That's pretty significant. And I just want to, this is, sorry, this is not the best contrast, but these are just some graphs that show the, they represent the growth on Facebook during Hurricane Ian. The top graph shows reach, which is obviously what it sounds, the reach that we're getting to people. That was 256,000 people. That's a huge increase from the otherwise normal amount of following that people follow on that particular page. The middle graph represents people who intentionally went to the site to get information. That was 190,000 people in just that period of time. The bottom graph shows likes, which obviously is a form of active engagement on the post, which we expect those users to continue to follow us thereafter. And this next, again, not the best contrast, but these graphs here, this is our County of Volusia Facebook page, which we're continuing to grow, and that went up about 100,000 people. YouTube, all of our press conferences are also put on YouTube, and anybody can go on there to look. And, you know, and here's something important to think about, is not everyone's on Facebook, not everyone's on Twitter, not everyone's on Instagram. But you don't have to be on any of those to go to YouTube and watch our conferences. They're free. In fact, this meeting today is being streamed on YouTube, no cost to anybody, and you don't have to have an account. So that's the beauty about having this platform and being able to grow it further, so that we can reach the multi-generational audience that we have today. So we used all five. This is another one we used called Nextdoor. This is a very unique social media platform, and how it was used for us during Ian, we did some blanket messages to all of Volusia County using this platform. But we also used it specifically to target certain neighborhoods. So for example, we targeted areas like Astor, Lake Harney, and Stone Island to talk specifically about flooding in the St. John's River. We also targeted specifically Osteen for post-storm efforts, you know, regarding sandbags. And also to Daytona Park Estates to ask residents to stop burning their debris, because the other people would have their, their windows open. So it, it's a limited platform. Not everybody's on it. But again, it's another platform that we could use. We had a total, as of today, probably now 43 news releases as of today that we've sent out, to a distribution list of over 600 recipients. That includes not just our media outlets, but also churches, schools, community associations and agencies, and, and basically anybody who else, who wants to receive them: chambers, hospitals, you name it. And then our networks, our media networks. Of the conferences that we held, we were able to see that every single news outlet picked up the majority of all of our conferences. In fact, Telemundo was physically present in our media room throughout the entire duration of the storm, and we were able to provide those reporters in real time, Spanish interpretation of news releases and, and real-time information. So from two to six to nine to 13, 35, all the networks carried our, our information. And that's important, because when it comes to a storm like this, not everyone gets their news in the same spot. And the other thing that I think we learned on this is the importance of redundancy. You know, a lot of us depend on television. Some of us depend on Facebook. Some of us depend on YouTube. Some of us depend on radio. But for example, Southern Stone Communications, who has multiple stations and is the primary radio outlet for Volusia County, their power failed, and so too did their generators. So they were out for no radio for four days. So again, that's another perfect example of redundancy to be able, for us, to be able to learn how to penetrate all those demographics in that multi-generational audience. It was, what I'll tell you, an opportunity. And I think we rose to the occasion. From that, with public protection, we'll pass it to interim director Mark Swanson.
Good afternoon. Mark Swanson, interim director of public protection. Been a busy week. We all know, you know, public protection is a 24-hour service, so we got doing animal services, beach safety corrections, EMS, fire. There's always something going on, so the storm just added to that. We're always ready to respond, ready to do whatever we need to do in any instance. So in addition to our regular daily duties, if this comes, then we, we take care of that as well. We had our challenges, every, as everybody did, you know, with this, with the wind and the rain and the, and the storm, and, you know, not being able to respond at times because of wind speeds and things like that. So we had some, but we had every representation from each of those divisions at the East EOC every day. And we had somebody there that could make decisions for that division during the day and at night. So we were there collectively doing that. Hope I'm pushing the right button here. Animal services, the things they did pre-storm was, they are one of our divisions that has to have their services in our shelters, to take care of pets inside the pet-friendly shelters. So they had a lot to get rid of, get ready before the storm. They had cages that had to be put in there. They had food that had to be put in the shelters. They had equipment that had to be in there. Obviously, the officers had to be assigned to those four shelters. They took care of all those animals in the shelters during the time of, of those people being in there. And any needs the animals had, they would take care of those needs. They had one incident where they had evacuate 19 dogs and 71 cats out of a Edgewater Animal Shelter that was, it flooded. So with the help of all their officers and with the help of some of the officers from the municipalities, they were able to remove all these animals from that shelter safely and get all those animals distributed out in the community, out to the other shelters where they would be safe. So it was a big undertaking for them, and under the direction of Adam Leith, they were able to accomplish all that. Beach safety.
Mr. Chair, can I comment on animal services? I'm sure he's listening, or they're listening. So I wanted to also point out to the public, and I know we have the news media here, I wanted to make sure that you heard this as well, but obviously, we had law enforcement going out to all the homes that were flooded, and people that had called in during the storm and, and said that they needed assistance. And so we had people from our beach safety, we had people from the sheriff's office, all the PDs, everyone going out to check on all these residents that had been flooded. But, but what do you do when you show up and you, you, number one, either help the person that's there in the flooded waters out, or you find out that that person already evacuated, and, and there's no one home, but there are animals home? And so they, they wade through in their, you know, waist-deep water, and then they see, I know one home, there were like nine cats when they waded through, the person was gone. And so I talked with Adam quite a bit during the storm, because I was getting a lot of questions from people in the public. But I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, you know, they just weren't, they weren't just hanging around and, and taking care of the facilities and, and those kinds of things. They were actually out in the waist-deep water, responding to these homes separately, because law enforcement would tell them that, hey, you know, we, we went by this house, we took care of the people, or we were, you know, we were, we removed the dogs with the owners, but if there was no, no one there, they would notify animal services and tell them, hey, there's a flooded house. The owners may not be able to get back to them, God knows how long, because of the floodwaters. And, and there's animals in there. And so they were responding and making sure that they were sheltering in place a lot of the times, because once they're removed, there's a huge possibility that they're not going to get connected again. So sheltering them in place, but just making sure that they were okay, and making sure they had food, water, all those kinds of things. And those are the behind-the-scenes things, I think, that people don't really hear about from the hurricanes. It's that additional stuff that a lot of our personnel were doing.
Beach safety. Obviously, what they had to do prior to the storm is they had to get all their resources off the beach, which is sometimes a, a big task to have to accomplish. It's not just pulling your, your assets and everything on the beach high like you can do sometimes when you get a high tide. But they're literally having to remove everything off the beach, which is a, a big accomplishment for them. So it's moving lifeguard towers, it's moving the signs that they use for the traffic lanes, it's securing some of the ramps on the beach. And there's just a lot of things that have to be done pre-storm. So, and then, you know, they have to make sure that the beach is closed to, to traffic, because obviously, once the tide comes in, you can't develop, you can't create a traffic lane, so you have to close it to traffic. So they had to close the beach down. Obviously, the beach has never really closed. It's open to, to people that want to go down there, but it's, it was closed to vehicles. So they had to accomplish all that. And during the, during the storm was, was one of the things that, that they did, which they haven't done in the past, but it really worked out well for it, this, this storm was, is we put lifeguards on all the MRAPs and lifeguards on all the high-water vehicles, because in a rescue in the water, who better is to do that rescue than a lifeguard? So we put those lifeguards in every one of those high-water vehicles, and they were utilized for rescuing some of those people out of the homes where it took somebody to get into the water, somebody maybe to swim to that person, to get that person out of harm's way. So they did a remarkable job throughout the storm. We got a lot of good feedback from the sheriff doing that, and it was a very, very good collaborative effort of getting all those people out of where they are trapped. So they did a great job there. And of course, you know, post-storm, they have a lot of cleanup that has to be done. And of course, you know, before you can open the beach, you got to make sure all the CZ poles are actually in place, which they're not right now, because a lot of them were washed away. Probably over 1,000 CZ poles got washed away in the storm. So it's, it's, it's paramount that, number one, they get all the debris off the beach, that has to all be done. And then they have to get the CZ poles put back in place. And then certainly, the beach has to be safe for, for vehicles to come back down there. So that's all a work in progress right now. They're still working on that, working through those things to get the poles put back, back in place and to get some of the debris out of the water. And, and, you know, we get some assistance from some of our other divisions to help do that in the meantime. So they're working now to get that done, certainly to get the beach open to the general public as quickly as possible, but being able to open it up and where it can be safe down there for everybody as well. And corrections, corrections.
Wait, hold on, Mark. Do we have a message from beach safety for people now? Are they, should they not be going near the beaches at all?
I'm going to call deputy chief Erin, Erin Jenkins up here, and he can give us a little bit more information.
I know we had the one fatality on the beach from the...
Yes, that's correct. Erin Jenkins, deputy chief, beach safety. Yes, we did have the fatality. That actually happened right in the middle of the storm. Very unfortunate event. She, you know, passed away. But really, the message for us right now is it is still dangerous. There's a lot of debris out there, and there's a lot of, you know, nails, decking, docking, I mean, all kinds of stuff. So we're advising, you know, don't go in the water. We're actually experiencing a bit of a tidal event right now as well. So we've got, you know, four-to-five-foot surf, rip currents are real bad, the water's very dangerous. So we, while we're not flying what we would call double red, which is what we did during the storm, we are flying red. It's very hazardous out there. We are out there, we're staffing the beaches as much, as much as we can. We're also continuing to staff some shelters, like at the Ocean Center as well. So, yeah. Thank you.
Our next division is corrections, and, and in, in tune with having to take care of all the inmates inside the facility, they did a lot more things for us as well in the, in the community. So keeping, keeping the inmates inside and utilizing the inmates that we're allowed to use for some of the sandbag building that we've been doing. We've been releasing a lot, a lot of sandbags into the community up until this morning, still releasing them on the west side to some of the areas that are, that are flooding, like in Astor and Stone, Stone Island, and, and some of the other places there, we're, we're continuing to provide sandbags. But they've just been endlessly during the day, building sandbags, loading sandbags on trailers, and delivering sandbags to where they need to go for the people in the, in the general public. So they have worked tirelessly, tirelessly between the administrative staff, between the corrections officers, and between the inmates of getting these bags built and get them filled, and getting them out to where they're needed. In addition to that, they provided some staffing in the, in the EOC that provided our meals for us during the day, during breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So there was a crew in there that was taking care of us and keeping us fed inside the EOC. And they also provided some security staff for us in the EOC during the storm as well. But they're continuing to assist us as we set up additional shelters, as we continue to build bags for distribution in the community, and pretty much anything we need to have moved, if we need to have some cleanup done on the beach, we have those, those teams of corrections officers and inmates that can actually come out and accomplish all that for us. So corrections has provided a huge, huge amount of help to us during the storm and, and continue to do so every day. Emergency management, wow, their staff is amazing. So keeping the emergency, the EOC going 24 hours a day during the, the entire storm. Director Judge has done an enormous job in there, has done incredible, just keeping things moving, keeping all the processes in place, and making sure that everybody that's in the EOC has all the things that they need to have to do their jobs, to not only manage the county, but all the municipalities within the county as well. So they've been, continue to do that, working with the American Red Cross, working with So they've continued to do that, working with the American Red Cross, working with just all our partners in the community to make sure that everybody in the community has what they need as far as resources during the storm and post-storm. And then, of course, you know, keeping us all updated, feeding information to community information so we can get all that information out to the community in a timely manner. Emergency Medical Services, EMS, County, Volusia County EMS, they're also a 24-hour operation, so they're providing medical care to the community before, during, and after the storm. Now, when the wind speeds reach certain rates, certain miles per hour during the storm, then they were unable to run calls, but those calls would actually put on a standby queue, and then after the storm, winds actually died down, we were actually to go out there and take care of those patients. But before, during, and after the storm, they were providing emergency medical care to inside the shelters, out in the community. We also had a staff at the EOC that would provide anything we needed inside the EOC. They also participated in some of the high-water rescue efforts out there. The person be brought into the MRAP or the high-water vehicle, brought into an ambulance, and the ambulance may have transported them to the hospital. So they were a very important component of that process as well. And they continue to help us with our shelters. We have about 250 people in the Ocean Center that we're continuing to take care of now. They have a staff there that's there 24 hours a day to take care of people inside the shelters and continuing to just do what we need in the community and just, you know, never-ending EMS support in the community. And of course, Fire Rescue, 24-hour operation as well. They're out in the community, there was times that they had to stop running as well due to the wind speeds, but they were also keeping track of calls on a queue. They also assisted in some of the high-water rescue efforts in the community. And, you know, of course, we had their staffing was at their training center on Tiger Bay. They actually ran a Operation Center for Fire in that training center. So they would manage the calls, prioritize calls, and respond as needed and when able to. So they continue to do that. And still today, they're providing assistance in the community. We had to evacuate two stations, one Station 12 that actually had some water leakage in there, and what we did is we moved them to the airport. Those firefighters that work in Station 12 are also duly certified, we're actually working the airport operation as well, so it really worked well. So if we had to move them, that was the place to move them, is in Station 17, which we did. And like I said, they participate and continue to participate in some of the high-water rescues.
Where are we at in getting that station back to?
They came in and did an assessment yesterday, and what I was told is the water level came above the electrical outlets on the wall. So they thought that all that paneling board inside is all going to have to be removed, so they're going to have to probably renovate the whole entire station, inside the station. So they were in there evaluating that yesterday, I just haven't seen that final report yet, but I know it's been evaluated. And the Medical Examiner. Had a lot of contact with the Medical Examiner during the storm. Obviously, we had those deaths, and we needed to have those bodies retrieved by the Medical Examiner, so I had some conversation with the operation manager at the Medical Examiner a couple of times during the storm. But of course, you know, they're always ready to respond in the community too, they have a trailer that they can bring out if they need to, and like, they're always standing by, waiting for us, ready if we need them. Their offices were closed Thursday and Friday, but they reopened as soon as possible to resume, revere, revine normal operations, and they're available to us now if we need them for anything, but they're standing by as well.
Good job.
Good afternoon. Ben Barlett, Public Works Director. Before I start, Mr. Reckonwald spoke about it, but, you know, couldn't be more proud of the staff at Public Works. I put that little thing up there that says Public Works, first in, last to leave, first to respond, last to leave. You know, I've been through Matthew and Irma with the folks at Roden Bridge, and this is my first time with all of Public Works, and I can't tell you how good of a team we have out there. We have folks that have been through the fires of '98 and storms of '04 and Fae and all that, and this one was up there with them. And so, you know, most of our folks have been responding since Thursday afternoon, when the winds let up, get out there, clear the roads, and assess the damage. So we're going to talk, work a little bit through what we got going on as far as the damage goes. You know, impacts, wind, trees, nothing we're not used to with previous storms. Talk a little bit about traffic signals, our utilities folks, what they were dealing with. One of the big issues, one of the big impacts we've had is to the beach and our coastal assets. And something that we haven't had recently is flooding, and we're going to talk about that as well. And then we're going to talk a little bit about recovery and what we're doing with the debris that's early coming out as we speak. So first up, wind and tree impacts. We had good news, we had minimal damage to our Public Works facility buildings, you know, the offices and the facilities that we use. Our new northeast facility over on 92 held up well, no issues with that. A lot better than if we were at the Holly Hill facility where I imagine that's underwater right now.
I was wondering how grateful you all were to be out of that.
I had one of my supervisors offered to kiss me because he was so happy that they didn't have to, you know, bug out and load up. And we actually, in the past, used to store all that equipment at the landfill, which I'll talk about a little later, as far as access into there initially was tough. But we had a moderate number of trees down as far as a wind event goes. I don't think it's on the order of a Matthew, right around an Irma-type situation, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to be dealing with debris. You know, a lot of folks are well-trained when it comes to that, cutting up those trees and getting them out on the road. So our Roden Bridge folks were out there initial, immediately clearing roads with our plam truck you see there and cutting with chainsaws and doing whatever they had to do to get those roads open and passable so our emergency service folks could get out to help people as needed. So we usually look at 72 hours for push and shove, and I can tell you that we were completed well within that time as far as tree damage, trees down. Obviously, we have some flooded areas that we couldn't get. Up next, signals. So this was a big deal, right? A lot of signals were out. Traffic engineering maintained 352 signals. That includes county signals that we own, city signals except for the ones in Daytona Beach, and the DOT signals. Surprisingly and luckily, we had minimal damage to most of our signals outside of the ones on the coast. They were out there Thursday making repairs. The issue with that is they can make all the repairs they want, restoration of power becomes the issue, and we were definitely working on that. You know, there's a limited amount of generators, we try to put them out appropriately, the state actually provides the generators for their signals as well. And then a lot of the signals on the coastal side are actually owned by the DOT, which we maintain normally, but when it comes to significant damage from a storm, they actually want their own contractor doing the repairs. So my understanding as of today, as of right now, we only have a handful of signals that are out. I'd probably say count them on one hand, most of the power's been restored to them, and so those are up and running. You know, I stress, it's been stressed many times in press conference and our messaging is, and I saw as it went on a little longer, people got used to it, but you've got to treat a down signal like a four-way stop, so, because it can be dangerous if you've got some people buzzing through and some people stopping. So hopefully, people heeded that lesson and minimized the accidents from that. Waters, Water and Sewer Utilities, our treatment plants held up well. We did have a water main break in Orange City, I believe it was Thursday night, resulted in a boil water notice for 53 customers. We had a gravity sewer main break, that was a result of some undermining associated, not with the sewer line itself. We got out there, made that repair. We had two lift station overflows, both less than 1,000 gallons. Again, you get the flooding, the collection systems become inundated. We have pretty good backup systems for our pumps, but if the collection system becomes inundated, it becomes an issue for those pump stations. And then lastly, Stone Island, you know, the river's coming up, a large portion of that community is underwater. We actually, because that system's inundated, we shut down the pumps so we're not pumping the St. John's River to our wastewater plant.
And Ben, I know we've had a lot of people reach out about the wastewater in the water plants, and so just to clarify, this is county-maintained facilities only that you're talking about?
Correct.
Because quite a few of the cities had the bridges with their wastewater, but I was talking with Mike earlier, and he was saying how the county was actually assisting the municipalities in those incidents and...
Correct. So when I talk about those, the floodwaters come up, or you get heavy rain, you get what we call INI, is infiltration into the system, that creates a huge amount of flow to wastewater plants. So you've seen cities, and you know, even in Orlando and places like that, they're asking customers, please don't use the water, it just adds to the flow going to those plants. And what ends up happening, and you'll see they have to make notifications to the state, is they end up basically just letting it pass through minimally treated. So in our...
I kept getting those emails, the DEP emails saying, whoop, whoop, whoop.
Correct. So we, we're in a good spot with our plants, we didn't have near as much of that, so we're in a position, I think with the city of Deltona, and also with Edgewater, that we can actually accept some of that flow to help minimize the impact to their plants, and we can accept it and treat it, you know, properly. All right, the beach. Can't stress this enough, this is significant and widespread damage. It's worse than Matthew. Multiple seawall failures, dune erosion, 15 of our 33 beach ramps need major repairs, 91 of 140 walkovers are closed due to damage. All 16 coastal parks sustained some form of damage, two parks, Lighthouse Point Park and the Jetty, as well as Frank Rendon Park sustained significant damage. And I'm just going to go through some pictures, this, you know, kind of gives you an indication of some of the, some of what we're seeing with seawalls breached and erosion. This is just a small snapshot of what's occurred along the beach. We've already, in fact, we met with some FEMA Army Corps folks yesterday to discuss, and one of the things we're looking at is preventative measures or emergency protection measures that we can put in place to, and I think Clay's group can speak to some of that to protect some of these properties that have experienced these kind of issues. Beach ramps, I've got quite a few of these photos. You know, this is kind of typical of what we're looking at across a lot of our ramps. We've got sea view here, massive undermining of the ramp. This is an aerial shot of Florida shores, that's concrete right there. It just, I mean, it looks like a saltine cracker got cracked, you know? And you can see in a lot of these pictures, you know, Florida shores, you know, like Deputy Chief mentioned, that we're still dealing with a significant tidal issue along the beach, so the water's up still fairly high. Couple other ramps, just more of the same as far as damage goes. Dunlaughton took significant damage, this is obviously a very busy ramp. And then the Jetty, and, you know, the wooden walkway obviously took a hit, but we saw large portions of the concrete walkway get swept away. So that's a complete rebuild right there. And then this one's, it was a Frank Rendon part. You had a seawall failure combined with basically just erosion all the way up to under those pavers. So that's some pretty significant damage to that part there. Flooding, so let's talk flooding. In past storms, really, you know, in the past decade, we've really dealt with wind primarily with minor flooding. We haven't had too many significant flooding situations since you go back to the May of '09 storms or Tropical Storm Fae, which I want to stress with those storms were isolated to certain portions of the county, Tropical Storm Fae, Southwest Volusia, May of '09, northeast portion of the county. This one was widespread throughout the county. At a minimum, Volusia County, where you are in Volusia County, you experienced 100-year storm event, which is 11 inches of rain over a hour period. And in the large part, in large parts of the county, you probably experienced up 50% greater than that. So, and possibly, I know some of the numbers that come in, we'll look at some of the rain data, there's some preliminary numbers, but you could anywhere from 50% to double what a 100-year storm event over a 24-hour period would put out. That's a lot of rain. Couple that amount of rain with, on the east side, the high tides, think about Spruce Creek, Timoca River Basin, you know, they need to flow out to let that water out. Tides are up, it's, that water's trying to flow out, it's hitting the wall, that wall's the Atlantic Ocean, right there, stopped it. What we've seen on the east side of the county and a lot of places as the tidal cycles move through, it lets the water out, and the water starts to recede, but it's a slow process. On the west side of the county, you've got closed basins, you get that much rain over a short amount of time. Closed basins are like a series of bowls, those bowls are going to fill up and eventually go over. And then now we're dealing with the St. John's River cresting at a point that I think is higher than has ever been recorded, so that's going to affect like Barney Woods, Stone Island, Astor, places like that along the, we're monitoring that right now. Based on a lot of the data we've seen regarding rainfall and our own visual observations, you know, we have a very great GIS team between the folks in growth and also in Public Works. And based on what we're seeing, we, we kind of think that plus or minus 247 miles of our 1,000-mile road network at one point had water over the road. That's about one-quarter of the road, the road, centerline road miles in Volusia County. Multiple road segments remain impassable due to flooding, and our Roden Bridge crews almost immediately were out making multiple emergency repairs to wash out culvert pipes, washouts to make sure that folks had access. There's a lot of roads, dirt roads especially are susceptible to this, where you have a culvert pipe, the water gets up over the road, it's trying to go, it's trying to push, you know, the amount of water you try to push through a fire hose is going through a garden hose at that point, and so it's just going to blow out the whole road. And we'll, I'll show some pictures of that, but Roden Bridge guys were out there putting in pipes, getting those roads back, making sure folks still had access to get out and get into their homes. So we got Boy Scout Camp Road, this is actually one of the culverts there. There's another one that's actually worse than that that they're working on today. Prosperance Road is an indication of what I was talking about with the dirt road, but I think by Friday, we actually had that passable with a pipe in place. So there was a few residents that live up that road that just flat out, couldn't get out. I think they had a neighbor take them out in a side-by-side, and they're actually deputies that back there, so it was important to get that open. Valco, and then Stone Island. These are just, you know, snapshots of a lot of what we saw out there. Williamson, so this is the bridge over Spruce Creek. So I don't know if you ever look at an aerial map of that or satellite map, you know, you got the winding Spruce Creek, and then there's kind of a wide area around it that's kind of a wetland. Well, that whole wetland area just became a river and overtopped the road, and that was up pretty high. And then Timoca Farms Road, so that's, you know, we talked about the flooding on the westbound lanes of '92, that was all tied to the Timoca River, that whole Timoca Basin, there's a point at which it goes to the Timoca River, a little to the north and to the south that flows to Spruce Creek. But long sections of Timoca Roads, Timoca Farms Road were underwater, including a bunch of homes that were back in there. The landfill entrance initially was underwater for a fair amount, which is why when we opened the Saturday after the storm, we only opened to commercial vehicles because we didn't want residents driving there, but it has since receded and we get folks out there. But I drove down, I think Friday morning, I drove down Timoca Farms Road and got halfway down, and there was no way I was going to get out there, so it was pretty deep. And then, so recovery. So, you know, one of the first things we always talk about is debris removal. We're looking at initial estimates of about 300,000 cubic yards of vegetation. So, you know, one of the first things we always talk about is debris removal. We're looking at initial estimates of about three hundred thousand cubic yards of vegetative material and approximately a hundred and eighty thousand yards of CND. The CND is something that's new to this. Wind, past wind events, we're dealing with vegetation. Flooding is going to mean lots of construction demolition. That's CND. Construction demolition debris coming out as people get their insurance adjusters out. They're going to cut drywall, they're going to remove carpet, they're going to do all those kinds of things. So we're anticipating quite a bit of that. We're actually going to have trucks on the road tomorrow. Debris collection starts tomorrow, October fifth. We're working with Community Information. We've got this nice graphic, you know, I think Mr. Reckonwald mentioned preparation before the storm. We've been through this a few times. We have these graphics prepared. It tells residents what to do and what to put out. We're going to be picking up three types of debris, vegetative, construction demolition, and then white goods, which appliances. So we're going to hit this hard. I know some of the cities have picked up a similar or used our graphic here to educate everyone because it has to be separated or it's not getting picked up. And the reason we do that is not because we're trying to be mean or anything. It's because it's all tied back to FEMA reimbursement. So what I want to stress is we're going to work, you know, our goal is to get this debris picked up as fast and efficiently as possible. But also at the same time, ensure that we maximize our FEMA reimbursement. And we got a good group, a good team together that's been through these storms that have done this. We have to work with Ryan's group on that. And, and that's a lot of what goes into why we do what we do on this. So-
Ben, two questions on debris real quick. First, on the, the little graphic of the landscape debris, do they have to be cut to a certain length?
No, no. But remember, if you bag your debris in bags, your vegetative debris in bags, and this is the unincorporated county. If you live in a city, it might be different. But in unincorporated Volusia County, if you put it in bags and set it, and it's under four cubic yards, the waste hauler is still going to pick it up as part of the normal yard trash. But if you put it in bags and expect the debris hauler to pick it up, they will not. Okay? So we don't want bags or plastic for the debris hauler, the big clam trucks. So it doesn't have to be cut. There's huge logs out there. They can get them. They got those big clam trucks and, and-
Okay. Barb Gertman?
He, he just answered my question. I went to City of Deland's commission meeting last night and there was discussion about the bags, not to bag the debris and, you know, the impact of that going forward. So that's what I wanted clarity on and wanted to put it on the record that if, if you would accept the bags or, and I assumed you wouldn't for the same reasons, it's going to be mulched or burned or whatever.
Correct.
And you don't want that. Okay, thank you.
So, you know, we asked the residents to sort the debris per the graphic into those three. And then we also, like I said, we're going to work with Community Information on the messaging. And we're going to have a debris hotline set up so folks can call with questions if, you know, if there hasn't been picked up. And just so, I don't know how many of y'all been through one of these before, but we actually, every pile that gets picked up, gets GPS log. There's a computer, we can tell when and where that truck was on that street and relay that information to everybody. So we know that this is a major operation and, and we've done it before. The CND is going to be a little bit new in that sense. And, and, you know, folks are well-trained in this county as far as getting the vegetative debris out, right? So we, we need to make sure they understand, separate and, and get all that other stuff out properly so we can get it moved out.
What if it's not separated? What happens?
They won't pick it up.
It's just going to be left there?
No, they won't pick it up. And generally what they'll, I believe they might put a tag in it, but I can confirm that. Or they will, usually that person will call. They'll see the truck go by the road. They'll call the debris hauler, hey, my stuff wasn't picked up. And our debris contractor also, we also have a monitor with each truck. And usually that information will be noted and we can explain to the person that it wasn't separated. And again, we're just, this is how FEMA requires this to be done, you know? And we've, we met yesterday with the representative, representing FEMA for the federal government for debris. And, you know, they're out there checking as well and taking notes and making sure we're doing it properly. And then again, the whole goal is to get it out and get reimbursed. Any questions?
There'll be more on debris because, especially with CND and home repairs, there's going to be a whole nother element with requiring dumpsters, things of that nature when you have a contractor. Basically FEMA, when you're looking at this stuff, this is assuming you, you the homeowner are doing this. So when you hire someone, that's different. And so for instance, if someone is ripping out all the drywall, a contractor, it should be, that requires a dumpster and being taken out that way. So FEMA will not pay for debris that is generated by a contractor.
Correct. If, if a contractor, tree contractor cuts your trees and places them on the side of the road, that's, they're supposed to take that. If you're a homeowner and you hire a contractor to do that, you need to insist that that person, that contractor takes that to the final, you know-
To the debris, where they can, to the-
Yeah, same with CND. So this is strictly for homeowners moving their own material out.
Now, they don't, if you have your nephew or something doing it, I don't think they go that far. But, and of course, they're not going to go back to what's already out there. But they have told us they're going to be around watching on the storm. So I don't know if that's a, if that'll be accurate or not. But back in two thousand and four, in those storms, they did come around and, and-
And that's back when we had piles from previous storms, then another storm, and then you had to figure out which pile was for which storm.
Yeah, those nightmare.
Ben, question, question before you leave. I just want to make sure that the flooding gets addressed. So where we're at with flooding in the county, I don't know if that would be you to discuss that or who?
Yeah. So right now, we've commenced-
What areas?
We, we've commenced pumping operations. Go back to our map here.
Obviously, we said Stone Island, Lake Harney.
So those are river.
Aster.
Those are Stone Island, Lake Harney Woods, you know, Aster and those places. Basically, if you're along the river right now, it's coming up. And now initially, I think what we had is New Smyrna and Edgewater and Port Orange, South Daytona, Daytona, Holly Hill, took a, took a beating with the river. I think a lot of that was, like I had mentioned before, those, those inland basins not being, you know, ton of rain, you know, high tide, not being able to move and get that water out. In the land, we've started some pumping operations. You've seen Orange Camp, I think still has water on it. Taylor Road, we're, we're pumping water. I stopped by Taylor Road yesterday afternoon and one of my supervisors was, you know, shoulder deep in the water in the pond setting the suction hose. And two nights ago, he was ripping carpet out of his house because his house flooded. So those are the kind of, you know, workers we got that are that dedicated. But we've got a fair amount of water over the road and parts of the land. And Deltona, from a county perspective, Howland had water over the road. And some, but I think there's more flooding in the city itself. I haven't heard from the city as far as, you know, homes and stuff like that. We've been mainly focused on getting the roads open and dealing with the unincorporated areas. I haven't heard too much from Orange City. DeBury, you know, they flooded really bad during Fae. They spent close to thirty million dollars in, in building a stormwater pumping system. They actually had an issue pre-storm, like right before the storm got bad. With one of their pump stations, we sent some of our utility guys down there to help and they got the pump station up and running. So I haven't heard too much from that. I don't think we've gotten near the flooding into Berry that we had during Fae. Again, we have very few county roads into Berry. So, but really, you know, the east side got hammered pretty hard. They had the most amount of rain and then that whole tidal situation. And the area around like Tamoka Farms Road and Pioneer Trail and those areas back in there, those Flatwood areas and all the way down to Maytown got hit pretty bad as well.
Okay. Janine Jennings, Business Services, and I'll be pretty quick. The biggest thing I, we did as, as far as facilities was the sandbags. And it sounds so simple, but I will tell you, our buildings did pretty well. Areas that typically on a bad rain day flood, where we put the sandbags down, we are seeing very little flooding. So the areas that we are really struggling with, with the waters, the fire station, Keet Street Library, Keet Street Health Department, Beach Street, four forty Beach Street, those are probably the, the worst hit areas for us. Probably should scan through here real quick. During the, during the hurricane, we had people out in the field during the hurricane. Between fleet and facilities, we had a few generator issues. The TCK was one. As much as that generator is tested and run a lot through the thunderstorms, it died at four fifteen, the day the hurricane hit. And we had people out here by five AM trying to get it up and going. They also were activated to some of the sump pumps to try to get worst sewage coming up and cleaning that all up also. Right now is our biggest time. We are now assessing all the buildings. Where we did have some water come in, replacing tiles. We have a remediation contractor that we, I actually hired three of them going in right before the storm hit. So they are all out here and they're all working at trying to get our buildings cleaned up. And they are doing the assessments of which ones we may not be able to open and what needs to be done for those. Those would be the four that we just talked about. So they're working hard. They're getting, we still have some power outages at some of our facilities, especially over at the City Island area. They're working with FPL to get us back up. Other than that, they did a great job. And I'm just going to do a shout out also to Jim Corbett and his team because Jim has been displaced. His house did flood and he was living over at the facilities warehouse out in the middle of trying to keep everything going. So great job there. Fleet, we have a hundred and fifty-four generators that we maintain. We tested them all prior to the storm coming. And we also made sure that we, all of our mission critical equipment was working and we had fuel ready to go. And fuel is huge during a storm. And we got very, very lucky in that when the storm went south, it really didn't affect the Tampa terminal and we were still able to be, able to bring in fuel. Because of the planning Robert did for fuel, we were able not only to take care of our, you know, Volusia County, but we were able to help out some other municipalities that did not have fuel or were not able to get fuel, which is something that in the past, we really haven't been able to do. We worked on the generators again between fleet and facilities. They were knocking out little things that were happening with generators. And I think as of today, out of the hundred and fifty-four, we have two that are still, the TCK, which needs some emergency part ordered. And one at the forty-four fire station, which we're getting a loner brought out here today. So other than that, we are, they're, they're doing great. They're still running. Mobile fuel trucks out there so we can keep all the trucks out on the road. But we need generators. They're moving generators around. And on top of that, they are also working with law enforcement because we maintain the sheriff's vehicles. And so we opened up the mechanic shop and we just did a little bit of work to keep them out of the street on Friday and Saturday morning. So otherwise, they're doing a great job and we're pulling everything back together for the county. Any questions?
Part of that fuel, I will also say, we, after I think it was Matthew, we made a capital investment in the fuel farm. We, we have more fuel than we used to keep. So it's another advantage we have. And we often end up fueling the National Guard, the power companies and other things because of that.
I also want to say, we were a little worried because, you know, we sold Holly Hill and we thought, well, let's see how that goes. And it actually was fine. I think the pre-planning and pre-stocking up of fuel got us through this fine.
Thanks, Janine. So on behalf of Tim Riddle, who's at the Ocean Center right now, I'll just take this slide and then from here, I'll pass it on to Clay Irvin. We initially opened up four shelters. It was Galaxy Mainland, Deland and Atlantic. And Galaxy and Atlantic were special needs shelters. We transitioned those to the Ocean Center on Saturday, October the first. So right now, we're utilizing the exhibit hall for those. And we're doing that in cooperation with the American Red Cross, who's also providing, you know, thousands of meals. As you can see right now from our slide, today, we have a hundred and ninety-seven total clients in the shelters. Yesterday, we had two hundred and eighty-four. So we will continue to do our best to find assistance for these clients. I do want to mention that, you know, when it comes to the special needs, there's a tremendous amount of cooperation that's required with our local Department of Health Office. So Mr. Stephen Civitelli and his team were, you know, outstanding through this entire process. And his staff's been staffing the table and the ops room, which is ESFA. And they've also been very helpful with environmental health strike teams as well. So when we get to lower numbers, Jim Judge and the emergency management team will work with FEMA on transitional shelter assistance when we reach that point. So it's ongoing and we're offering assistance we need. So with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Irvin.
Does anyone, anyone know when we're going to have the disaster, like the FEMA disaster zone areas set up?
I'll take a shot at that. So, so their, their strike teams arrived today and are going in two neighborhoods. We're working with FEMA to set up a disaster recovery center. You might hear in the future, the acronym DRC. That's different than our applications. The idea is for that to be located at our wholesome back facility within the Department of Health. We were hoping that we could announce when that would open today, but we don't have enough information to reliably announce that. That'll be a location where individuals can meet in person with FEMA on their individual assessment for public facilities claims. It'll be co-located with the Small Business Administration, SBA, who also help assist people. We're hoping by the end of the week, that might be in town. But at this point, I don't have a good timetable to reliably say.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. We're going to touch on the three divisions that make up growth and resource as we go through this and then kind of wrap up where we are with what our needs are going to be for the next couple of days. First of all, you're building in a code administration division prepped really prior to the storm. The primary point is all of our inspectors contact all the contractors and say, get this safe as, site as, safe as possible. Secure all loose debris. Make sure you have all this taken care of. We also make sure that our seven teams know where they're supposed to be, when and how they're supposed to go out. Post-storm is really where we come into action. That's where we were out partially on Friday, fully on Saturday, to every place that we could get to. We are still somewhat frustrated as the residents are in that we cannot get back to many of these areas where you have flooded roads. You brought up Stone and Island. That's one of the locations. Baxter Point, which is at the very southern end of our county, has water up to the roof. So there's no way we're getting in there right. So we will continue to do so. The amount of erosion that has occurred on the coastal aspect is really impacting many single family homes. And we got word today that Daytona Beach Shores has a, basically a safe zone around two structures because they're going to be collapsing if not properly secured. So we're working with the city. Yes, sir, the Hawaiian Inn. Yeah. According to our information, it was the Hawaiian Inn and the White Surf. So we're working with the city, working with DEP. They've passed a emergency order granting us the ability to do certain levels of emergency shoring. We're mobilizing with that. The big concern you're going to have is that residents have an expectation that we will deliver rock, sand and sheet piles. And we're not- And we're not going to be providing those to individual private property owners. So, we've been letting them know, they need to get an engineer, they need to get a contractor, get in and talk to us as soon as possible. If it's an imminent situation, go ahead and get going on it and come back for and after the fact permit. We don't want to have that situation where because of the unfortunate bureaucracy established with permitting at times, delays necessary improvements that are needed to protect our private structure. So, right now, we're working through that with your legal staff. Environmental is heavily engaged because again, also tied to it. So, the other thing that's going to start cropping up is unlicensed contractors. They are attracted to these areas because they're con people. They'll show up, take money and walk away. So, we want to make sure everybody's aware to utilize licensed contractors. Environmental management. Aside from the management aspect, we have two environmental centers that they had to prep prior to the storm. Both of those have live animals, need to make sure that there's coverage and everything's protected. And the Marine Science Centers in Ponce Inlet, where there was excessive amounts of flooding, we were able to get down there relatively early, late Friday, early Saturday. Chad went down and does what Chad does so well and got every, the pumps going. We worked with coastal, make sure that we could get everything pumped out safely and allow those title influences to take away what they deposited. Overall, we've been able to really work well with our representatives of DEP. There's some things that we want to make clear with them as to what we can and cannot permit. And that's where Jennifer Winters and Ginger have been on the phone with our DEP representatives to make sure that if someone's doing something, they're not going to get penalized for it down the road, nor are we. Interesting, we had approximately 94 nests prior to the event. There were actually three nests still in there. Again, the viability of that is zero to none because of the inundation by the water. But it was amazing that three still survived that.
You something? Going back to the condos, in particular, I'm talking about the shores right now because I did have someone contact me last night. And they said, I'm going to be getting lots of phone calls from this one condo building. They said that the county is holding them up from getting anything accomplished.
We are not.
That's exactly what I said. But I just wanted that to be on public record, that we have nothing to do with internally the condos, correct?
Correct. First of all, any permitting would have to be through Daytona Beach shores.
And I told them that.
But we would be issuing a beaches and dude shit. But one thing that is happening and it's hampering our own efforts and Ben brought it up in his discussion, access to the beach is over our beach ramps. As you saw, many of our beach ramps are destroyed. So, therefore, what we're trying to do is find the beach ramps where folks can get down to the beach to make these necessary repairs. If they can be done by the landward side, we're not, we are not engaged. So, we are.
Well, this wasn't anything to do with a seawall or anything that we would have been involved in. This is their damage inside. So, I just wanted that on the record so they could hear me.
No problem. And we're trying to, we're working with the cities to make sure, we had a conversation with them Saturday, talking about the emergency order. So, going on Planning and Development Services, they were primarily in ESF5, which is your planning. They were doing a lot of the drafting of the sit reps and coordinating with all the different cities to make sure that was effective. I'm going to go back to, pardon me, can I go back? Okay. The big thing that we want to bring up, and it's something that's coming to our attention as of this morning, places that were required to have flood insurance were based on a hundred year storm event. We had probably a 500 year storm event. So, there are places that have flooded that were never intended to flood. And many of those people do not have flood insurance. So, they are not going to have any coverage. One of our employees who oversees the community rating system as part of the Florida, our floodplain management, unfortunately, had three feet of water in her home. That was part of a backup from wastewater plant as well as flooding. Luckily, she has flood insurance. Probably 90% of her resident or of her neighbors don't. So, you're going to see that coming over the next several weeks where folks are going to be saying, I've called my insurance company, they tell me I'm out of luck and I've got a total, and I've got a total demo. So, we're prioritizing getting out there with the beach side, making sure that those homes that are on the precipice of falling into the water, we're working with the building assessment to make sure that anyone who is in a home that probably shouldn't be there is informed of that. And then making sure that they have access to the folks that Donna has set up for assistance as well as FEMA. And then really just trying to get the MSC and LEC open up to the public. But we do foresee this insurance issue really being a major hit, not just to our county. I have a friend who works in Lee County and same situation is happening there.
Cyrus, welcome to the shores.
Yes, definitely. I definitely had an experience of my own on the shores. Fortunate that my building didn't lose a seawall, but we have significant water damage from a lot of the units as a result of taking that win head on. Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Resources. And you're going to hear a recurring theme, I'm sure. Very proud of the staff, the way that we collaboratively came together. Now, I focus with my slides on damage assessments and things that happened after the storm. But for airports in particular, it's very difficult because we have to strategically and methodology, the methodology of ceasing operations, you want to make sure that you're not closing too early because you don't want to strand your passengers and your customers. But then you don't want to close too late because you don't want a safety situation to happen to where you end up with an aircraft accident. And so, we worked very closely with air traffic control. They made a decision to close at a certain time. We coordinated with our airlines to make sure that their schedule would work so we would have enough time in order to tie up our passenger boarding bridges and get the equipment off of the ramps as required. And then also to make sure that we're adhering to securing the airport per TSA guidelines and federal aviation administration guidelines. So, with that, we took on, according to the National Weather Service, we took on 62 mile per hour winds sustained, 81 mile per hour wind gusts, so well over category one storm gusts. And we had significant portions of the airfield that was underwater. So, when you're looking at airfield, of course, with pavement and you heard Ben say, just with the roads throughout the county, that pavement underwater eventually, as it pertains to that pavement being able to hold up to aircraft operations, there's going to need to be some more review on how we're going to assess that damage. Because the number one thing that helps to deteriorate pavement the fastest, of course, is that involvement with water. So, we'll go back and look at that. And of course, with runways, you have the lights, the runway lights, the taxiway lights and all the signage that's associated with that as well. There's going to be some more extensive damage assessment processes that we need to go through in order to make sure that those are working properly as well. Also, with the pipes that we have under the airfield, we've suffered a little bit of inlet damage and some erosion there. We lost an air stair truck. And so, the air stairs truck, when we do have to handle like charter aircraft, for instance, and one of the FBOs aren't available to take the passengers off the aircraft, we roll up an air stair truck. And so, we did sustain damage to that piece of equipment. Inside the terminal, typical building leaks that we normally have during our seasonal thunderstorms. And so, we were able to address that. And then prior to the storm, we put up some tarps to protect the glass and the atrium because of the new $14 million terminal, we need to make sure that that was well intact. The parking lot, we did have significant water in the parking lot. So, some customers that left their cars behind will be addressing that as well. One of the things that kept us from reopening as early as we wanted to was the fact that we have 500 feet of perimeter fence that was down. And I had some pretty pictures to show you all that were removed from the presentation. But in order to meet our TSA requirements, of course, naturally, you have to make sure that the airfield is secure before you have commercial service operations. And so, we worked very closely with our on-call contractor to get that fence up and operating as soon as possible. And then the airport was able to open, taking on arrivals first thing Saturday morning, I want to say about 10:00 a.m. So, moving on to economic development.
Do we just have one air, that truck?
So, we have one air stair truck, but fortunately, with Shelter Air and with Yelvington, they have an air stair truck and they actually survived the storm. So, we have a great relationship to where in the instance that we may need to use it, they would be available for us. Now, economic development, Helga and team, they were proactive in reaching out, doing email blast communications to as many of our small businesses as they could ahead of the storm to make sure that they had all the paperwork necessary should they take on damage and make claims with FEMA and other entities that would be able to help them. And so, right now, as it stands, Helga is in communication with the city economic development practitioners. And as Susannah mentioned earlier, we're looking at locations to set up disaster recovery centers and mobile units for displaced businesses. So, once again, on the shores, there's a number of strip malls that took some significant hits as a matter of one. One of my favorite locations is where we're looking for some opportunity to at least try to get some semblance of normalcy set up. And so, economic development is working on that and trying to provide some avenues for help. So, with that, any questions? Thank you so much. Likewise, I'm glad you all are safe as well.
Donna Butler, Community Services. Well, we've been busy too. So, I won't go into pre-storm stuff too very much. We did all the things necessary to get folks where they needed to be through Votran and get fuel done and did our documentation as a request of all of our assets. During the storm, we also staffed an additional shelter that wasn't mentioned earlier, was a homeless shelter out at the fairgrounds. We actually had about 144 folks there. It was not just individuals, but families that had cars that were living in their cars and made their way there as well. So, an additional resource for those most needy in our community. So, there's a whole laundry list of things that we've done there. ESF15 is managed by the Department of Community Services and staffed by incredible folks. We are very busy immediately after the storm, taking in calls that come in through the CIC and putting them into a system called Crisis Cleanup. If you haven't heard of it before, it's a great nationwide system. And they put all of the needs for immediate individual needs, for tarping of people's roofs, for mucking out their homes if they've had flooding, all these different things. They put those in the system and they, United Way, in conjunction with others, hosted a volunteer event today out at the Ag Center, kicking off the volunteer efforts in the community to try and get these folks back in their homes or at least get their homes in a more livable situation. So, we continue to do that. We're also managing community donations. Past day and a half, I've been working on food for our community, getting a nonprofit that's based in St. Augustine and Palacada donate food. They've donated several thousand pounds of chicken to two different soup kitchens and as well, St. Baptist just posted that they have 3,000 pounds of bananas. So, it's just going to be random that food we get in. As soon as this is over, I'm going to be talking to somebody from Miami who's going to be sending some food up. We're also, thanks to Barb actually, and I think you mentioned Jeep Beach as well, they are putting on an event today and again on Saturday in the Midtown area, which is great. We're going to talk to them about doing an event sometime soon in New Smythe Beach. If you haven't heard, the housing authority there has elderly and disabled folks, about 40 units of about 100 folks completely flooded. And then when the power came back on, it ruined their refrigerators. So, we're trying to get them perishable foods and other cleaning supplies and other things. Today and Saturday's event is at Campbell Middle School. It's in partnership with a bunch of different folks, Humm, Food Brings Hope, Jeep Beach. And they've got all types of things out there as well as with the food truck. So, we're trying to get as many people to tell us what their needs are and then try and get resources back out to them as much as possible. DRC, that was mentioned earlier, the county actually is a payer of last resort when they can't get insurance to pay for their recovery or FEMA. If FEMA denies them, then they can come to us and we can try and assist them. So, we'll be out there whenever FEMA does come. Moving forward, so some of our priority concerns and long-term issues. One is housing for residents that just absolutely cannot return to their homes. I don't know that we have a solution yet. We're going to be having some community meetings in the future to talk about that. We still have two libraries not open. City Island, as you know, doesn't have power yet, but it was not hurt at all in the storm. So, as soon as we get power, we're open. Keats Street Library, Dickerson Library, it's going to be a well on that one. One of my concerns and why I've been talking about food so much is that DSNAP benefits, which are different than SNAP. SNAP is for, SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And for those that already qualified that for that, their cards were given some additional money. Happens every time there's a hurricane. But for those that did not have SNAP, we usually have DCF come in and they host an event here locally over the course of several days and people can get a new SNAP card just for the emergency. Unfortunately, they're not coming until November 1st or shortly thereafter, that first weekend in November. So, that's why having these food discussions across the community is so important. So, if you have folks that say, I have resources, or if you hear from people that have needs, please have them call me, you call me yourself, give me their contact information, whatever you want to do. Because we're going to keep trying to have those conversations. So, that's the second big issue. And then, you know, we're have boat launches are closed because the rising water and it causes a lot of damage.
Donna.
Yes, sir.
Barb Gertman has a question.
Ma'am. So, I was asked, and you may be addressing this, I was asked about transportation through Votran to get to the libraries and get to wherever services are needed. Is there any access to passes or any, I saw that if you're going to the shelter, you could go, you know.
Yeah, if you're going home from the shelter, we're giving them passes because most of them left their funds at home or didn't have access to any funding to be able to pay for a bus pass to get home.
Right.
We can address that. I'm not sure, I don't have a good answer for you. So, let me get you one. So, you're talking about people that.
Okay, I just told them to let me know kind of what the needs were because they were talking about like Midtown and, you know, areas that have been affected.
Sure.
And how to get people if their cars have been damaged and, you know, they've had issues. So, I just asked them to give me some idea of the need so I can get that information to you.
Yeah. Get that need to me and let me see what we can do to help.
Okay, and I'll get the person that reached out to me because they're a community advocate. So, let me get them.
Thank you.
To you and you guys can figure it out. Thank you.
All right, there were a couple more slides in our crew here. So, library services, all the libraries that are open, they are already helping anyone that walks in the door, apply for FEMA. We also have a staff member located for four hours a day at the Ocean Center so that those that are in that shelter, they can have assistance with some computers to apply. Not very many people are taking advantage of that, but they may just really be overwhelmed right now. So, more than 80 residents have already received help for applying. And Votran, we continue to provide assistance there and I will definitely look into that, get me the information and we'll see what we can do. Maybe we can just do a part-time shuttle so we take 20 people to the library, get them some help from folks and then come back. All right, any questions?
Yes, yes. I'm having lots of calls and I know Barbara has responded to some of them also, like Charlene. But people who have clothing, they want to know what they can do with it. And I do want to emphasize at this point to everyone, don't go through your dumpster I do want to emphasize at this point to everyone, don't go through your dumpster and pick out the clothes. Make sure they're clean and sorted in size and before you drop them off. But where, where can they go to?
Right now, I'd suggest they give them to organizations that share, like on the west side, Neighborhood Center might be a good location. They have their homeless facility and then they might be able to assist. But let me do some research. Again, with the call that I'm trying to arrange for tomorrow, we need to figure out if there's an agency that might be able to take on the leadership of that, maybe on the east side and the west side, and then figure out a way to get that clothing there to the folks that need it the Thank you so much for your support.
One other question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when there is a location at Holsonback, will there be anything on the west side?
Not generally. They generally only provide one location. They may change their mind. They've changed their mind. So, we are going to have two locations for D-Snap. Soon as I can figure out the locations on the east and west side, we will have two. Last year we, or last storm, we only had one. It was at the fairgrounds. It was not a good situation. We're not going to go back there. So, we're looking for east and west side. So, we can ask that, but right now we just want to get them here.
Can we provide busing from the west side to get to the FEMA location?
Something we can look into. They can apply online. So, it might be almost easier if we get them to a library in their neighborhood. So, in case they need additional information, than to get them across the county. But we'll definitely look into what options are needed. And I will say that the county staff is definitely open to going to more than one location. We could easily set up and, you know, have specific days in, say, the Deltona Library and the Deland Library, some of our libraries, and have county staff in conjunction with library staff helping at our end. Because we're the payer of last resort. They have had to go through, like I said, FEMA before they get to us.
Good afternoon. Dana Page-Pender, Human Resources. And our job is to take care of the people who are taking care of our community. Mr. Reckonwell shared some of our efforts helping our employees whose homes are uninhabitable find sheltering. Our big focus right now is we've retooled our Volusia Cares, which is our employees helping employees. We're in phase one right now where we're collecting hygiene kits and gift cards for our local eateries so that they're able to get meals if they don't have a place to be able to cook and eat. Phase two will be, like you just talked about, Ms. Wheeler, collecting clothes and bedding and things of that nature as they return to normal in the coming weeks. We have currently two drop-off locations for Volusia Cares. We've got one over in Human Resources in the Historic Courthouse, and we also have a drop-off location at the Port Orange Library. So, we've got information out on our website, our local internet, but right now we're just trying to take care of our employees who have taken care of our community.
Dana, do we have any idea how many employees are, have like, have had their homes devastated?
I can tell you that we found shelter for about nine, but I know there are more than that. A lot of them found shelter within families, family members and friends.
I would guess it's probably a couple dozen at least.
In, before I cover the IT slide, in finance, I didn't even put a slide in here because really the finance team will be dealing with this for years to come because FEMA will take years to come to deal with all this. We're still working on the recovery from Hurricane Matthew. During the storm, or prior to the storm, the finance team is sending out advice, forms, log forms, disaster assessment forms, all the stuff to coordinate with FEMA. During that same period of time, IT is getting prepared with some of the mapping and analytical tools that they have, getting radios out to people that need radios if they don't already have them, and ensuring backup of all of our critical systems. Because all of this, including the EOC, is running on IT backbone-supported systems. If something goes wrong with the IT, we are, there's plans in place, but it's not going to be as easy without the IT resources there. During the storm, IT is staffing 24/7 at the EOC to deal with any communications issues that come up. The radio system maintained during the storm. There was a tower that the generator did not fire, but the system is redundant. So, there was no loss in radio communications during the storm. The county servers and data centers were up. There was some loss of redundancy, but thankfully the way the system was designed and through luck of not having certain data lines get severed, you know, there's always, there's backups and there's backups, but there's also, there's also a lot of trees in between the east side and the west side of the county where our main data center and our backup data center are. We're also working to restore outages, making sure that the towers that were running on generator had appropriate fuel. There were, there was a lot of phones. Our phones are naturally coming up for replacement, all of our IP-based phones. There's a lot that were already scheduled for replacement. This accelerated that process because the power coming on and off does damage to the sensitive phones, especially the older ones. And then also working on aggregating all the reporting information out of the systems that are available. That's another critical area that IT is involved in. Any question?
Yeah, the individual emergency assistance from FEMA, assuming it's really important for people to fill out those applications as quickly as possible. Can they expect the same kind of delays that governments see, four years, six years?
I don't think so. I'm not well-versed in how the individual assistance process goes. We specialize in the public assistance process because that's what we have to do to get the county's money back. I believe the individual assistance process is faster than that. In fairness to FEMA, there are some areas that they're a lot faster. Our debris projects are for Matthew, Irma, and I expect this storm, the debris projects get paid pretty fast. It's the stuff where staff time is involved. FEMA has a lot of nitpicky checking that they do. With every log, staff has to fill out logs. If it's not logged, it didn't happen. So, we have a lot of what they call the category B emergency protective measures. It's the staff time that they have the hardest time reimbursing. When it's an invoice, there's a lot less work for FEMA to work through. For individual assistance, again, I'm really not as, but I haven't.
Yeah, it seems to be storm-specific. I would say this particular area might be, it depends on how they attack it. We're hit pretty bad, but we're nowhere near hit as bad as, say, Lee County and Charlotte. So, do they pay down there quicker or do they try to take care of here first? It's really hard to say, but it is, I will say from talking to Jim and other, Jim Judge and others, the average check though, for individual assistance is pretty small. It's not, people typically get some money, but they usually are not made whole. Let's just put it, put it that way, or even close to whole. So, and like Clay said, unfortunately, flooding is one of the worst because if you don't have flood insurance, your normal policy is not going to pay. And most people unfortunately only get flood insurance if they're required to. And usually that's through their, you know, their bank or someone, their mortgage lender makes them. So, this is going to be very hard on the community, I predict. And that's why probably more to come when it comes to human services and stuff that Donna's dealing with and Clay and his folks are going to have, it's going to be a very difficult period of time.
I did remember one thing to add to that. Part of the process with FEMA, with its public assistance, it actually has to run through the state. So, you have to work, we have to work with FEMA and then we have to work with the state to get our money. So, it's a two-step process and a lot of times, some of the process, some of the lengthier part of the process is trying to get the reimbursement. Projects get obligated usually pretty fast, which means the federal government has authorized it to the state. It's working through the state to actually get the reimbursement. Individual assistance does not work through that thing.
Okay, so get their applications in, which they could do at volusia.org.
So, I just want to, I want to make a statement. Praise God, we have reserves and that we have planned. This is times like this that we do those things and people want to complain about us having this money setback. We can't just use it for just anything. It's times like this because it may be a long time before we get refund and we've got to pay for it. And I know at one of the storms, we had to help the cities, correct? The municipalities with cleanup. Didn't we have to do that with one of them and I mean with several of them?
Coordinate some of the damage assessment and getting the declaration.
Yeah, we helped them typically along those lines.
But it takes, you know, it's definitely...
Oh, yeah, exactly. And some communities end up having to borrow money.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
To front money for the storm. So, yes, you're correct. Matter of fact, I might as well wrap it up with that. I was going to point that out is that, yeah, we have very, that is why we have reserves. And you see, the federal government, when we go and meet with FEMA in the non-storm period, they're warning you that, look, it may not be, you know, a lot of times it depends on, well, what else is happening in this country? And that'll depend on how much money you get, how fast you get it. Because, you know, they're covering the entire country. I mean, they've had, you know, massive fires out west, you know, a lot of money is going out that way. So, they tell you. Matter of fact, we still don't have the reserves that they would recommend you have as a coastal community. And when you see what's going to happen, you take Lee County, you know, with massive property loss. So, the effect of that besides the damage, the values of those properties now are different and much less. So, therefore, the effect of that will be the taxes they collect in years to come will also be less. And then that just impedes them on their ability to recover. So, that's just another thought. I was going to say, right now, the damage we have, not counting the county damage, is around $147 million now in this county. We know we have 12-plus million dollars to add to that to the, from the beach area. And then we get into our other, you know, you're going to be talking debris, probably the neighborhood of eight to 10 million dollars. And then, and maybe other damages. Fortunately, we don't seem to have a lot of damages in buildings, but the roads, I can't really tell you what those numbers will be at. And then large expenses for just propping. Now, we will get some reimbursement. There's no doubt about that. That will help. But there may be needs and things out there that are coming that I don't know would be reimbursable and that's where we're going to have to make some decisions, I think, later on. So, again, stay tuned. But again, I just wanted to point out, again, it's far from over. The number's still rising. And, but I will say, we have prepared and we're in good shape. And keep your thoughts so that no other storms come our way anytime soon. If they do, I'll be asking people to come on out and pet the alligators that are on my back porch.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one addition too. I did receive a message during your conversation on the dais this afternoon from Jim Judge. In addition to the Disaster Recovery Center at Holsonback, we are putting in a request for a mobile unit, a DRC mobile unit that would be able to go to the west side, north, south reaches of the county. So, hopefully they'll arrive here shortly. I still don't have an estimate on what day they'll be able to start that service, but we're anticipating some service to the west side.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
May I?
You may. Your name's just always up there, so.
Oh, is that what happened? Oh, okay. All right. So, I wonder, everything we do is about relationships, right? So, I wonder if there are relationships with federal or state FEMA or with our legislative, with our lobbyists, with our legislative teams. Is there anything that we can be doing to help, you know, bridge or connect or make this, you know, an easier transition with FEMA and with those representatives to consider Volusia's impact and, you know, get our needs addressed?
I think right now, we have already been in contact with most of them, if not all of them. We had a little glitch that we didn't know really some of the time. I mean, I think when it came to even getting declared, but that was a communication, they did it in groupings and it would just have been nice to let us know they were doing that. So, my heart slowed down a little bit. So, we're, we've already established and are talking with them. I would say, I think we need to do our part first and get all of our stuff like we are doing and we're very good at. In fact, the FEMA people, we have talked with our people are so far very positive about how we're set up. We obviously have experience and we know what we're doing. But there will come points, I think, when things might get more competitive. And when that occurs, then we need to be ready. So, it would not hurt to be, we will keep people informed and talking. Our beach in particular is going to be an area that may require some of that. You're talking about the Army Corps of Engineer. You saw the picture of the jetty, by the way. I saw chunks of the middle of it gone. So, it's not just the concrete top. I think there's some damage to the jetty itself. But when it comes to the beach, that is, it's going to be a challenge because it's not an engineered beach. And that, and matter of fact, you guys approved some things and we may need some help. If you'll recall, we've been trying to get some studies done that would be analyzing things for sand or put us in position to do maybe some engineering on the beach. That's where I think we're going to need some help because the competition again will be fierce. You know, they look at the beach in a lot of ways as a recreational area and there'll be a lot of questions about what we maintain, what we don't maintain. Fortunately, again, we have modernized all of our technologies through the years. We have very good records. But it's an area that FEMA struggles with because across the nation, you know, that's where they have some of their biggest issues. So, again, that's where I see we may need some help. And we'll keep them abreast of that situation. And if you guys are talking, I would keep that in mind. We have been put in touch though with the FEMA beach people and we will work diligently along those lines.
I just think it's helpful if there are council persons with relationships.
Yep.
At higher levels that you still plant those seeds early, early on and not, not wait till we have to, you know, not wait till we have a problem, but let's get to a point where, you know.
I had a post hole digger and I was sticking sprigs, not even seeds. I was starting to plant things this weekend, so.
Okay, awesome. So, my other question is, so what timing to go to rollback and have a... So my other question is, so what timing to go to rollback and have a hurricane, a 500-year event, right, what, two weeks later? What does, what does that look like for, for us?
With your general fund budget, you need the reserves to make the cat, you need the reserves to make the payments, but ultimately FEMA will come through and we will end up recording receivables from FEMA for next fiscal year. The timing of this, the majority of the, there's some expenses that are in fiscal year '22, but the majority will be in fiscal year '23. So we'll end up recording the receivables for it. You'll see a reduction in our cash balances, but ultimately will be, the ultimate expenditure, once it's all said and done, will be the local net. And this, based on what George was talking about, this looks like it would be an expenditure similar to Irma or Matthew, to which your local match is in the line of around $2 million. So we will need to pull that ultimately from reserves. A lot of that will come from the general fund and we'll have to find a way to balance that. Could even be higher depending on what the ultimate damage assessments be. So we will have, we will have a reduction in reserves related to this storm, but because of the FEMA receivables, we won't have to have even more reduction in reserves. You just need that, those reserves in place to make the cash payments while you're waiting And to go back to your previous question, as far as the advocacy, we've been working through the process with Matthew and Irma, and sometimes we've, we've put additional pressure at additional times to accelerate the process. Sometimes you get a little bit, sometimes you don't. I think the biggest benefit is like what George was saying when it comes to getting things covered, especially in the beach. We did use some of our delegation to try to support us on Plaza Boulevard, which was during Hurricane Irma. Ultimately, FEMA did end up denying both of those appeals, even with the legislative support. Those are few and far between where we get those denials. A lot of our projects do get approved, but in those cases, that's where it's most effective is to get them to cover things, not so much on the timing. The timing helps, but FEMA's going to take the time it's going to take usually.
Well, hopefully, we have a legislative team that, one's on the appropriations and the other's holding the gavel and they're both connected to Volusia County. So if we can't get any help this time, right, so I just don't want us to take it for granted. And again, I think what we can do, we will do, and everything's based on relationships. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Who's next? Michael Dyer?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Billy Wheeler.
Wow. On that note, first of all, I want to thank all of the staff, every department head, and please extend the thanks to all of your departments. But everybody has come out and done above and beyond. There's not been a selfish bone in anyone. Everyone has given more than what's been asked, and they take it all personally. They take it all personally. I have used all of the information that's been out to us, and it's been a lot. I have used the connections a lot, so all of those, those people that are getting on Facebook and Instagram and all that, half of them, I think, are me, are from me. But I've placed calls to staff and had immediate answers that I could give my constituents. The needs are so great. My district, I actually got out like two, well, the next day, some areas, but I went from Pond Inlet to actually Ormond by the Sea and was just blown away by the volume of mess that we had. I couldn't see on the beach at all. I couldn't go down Peninsula and I couldn't go over the bridge, so I didn't get to the rest of the areas until Sunday, I guess it was. And then I went Mason Avenue, Nova from Mason, going through International Speedway all the way to Ridgewood on both sides, east and west of Nova. Danny, you know, the flooding, I could cry. I could just cry, the amount of flooding I saw. And people with their cars parked out on the Nova in apartment complexes that were just standing there, didn't know what the heck to do. It is, it's, every single side street I tried to get down to even get back, I couldn't do. I couldn't get to it. And then I went over to Krabby Joe's and was standing in the county lot, taking pictures with Mike Springer as part of the wall collapsed. And we both went scampering. I grabbed my car and got the heck out of there. That was when I contacted staff and I said, please, on your next public announcement, tell people to stay off the crosswalks, stay off of those walls because there's nothing underneath them on a lot of those occasions, and you're going to fall. Headphone calls and emails, and I know Jeff had them also for at least two homes in Wilbur that were just panic-stricken that their seawalls were gone and the erosion was up to their homes. I contacted each one of the mayors of the cities that I'm involved with and tried to get to each city, and each, each one of them was just one story after another, after another, of just, oh heck, what the heck are we going to do? One of the places I stopped was, I was taking water wherever I could, I could find people and I was giving out water or whatever. And I stopped in Pond Inlet, couldn't get down a road, and, and there was an elderly couple standing out in the street. I shouldn't say elderly. If you're listening, I'm sorry that I said elderly. A rich couple that was standing there, and they had pumps going on in their house, and they said they had a sunken living room that was now an internal swimming pool, three feet of water. And it's just story after story after story. I believe so much in our community. I believe so much in our, our staff. Donna Butler, oh my gosh, lady, you're, you're just amazing in what all you've got to handle. Clay, you've been out there when I've said, please, help me with somebody's house that's falling, which we really can't do much, but at least they need to hear from us what we can provide or lead them. I can't begin to tell you how important the staff has been for us or for me, I can only personally say for me, to help me answer the questions because it's been non-stop emails, texts, whatever, that we're getting, of people just, I had an elderly lady in a condo 20 stories up, couldn't get down. The elevators were out and they were having to do 24-hour walkarounds in their building because of the fire alarm was down. And one of the churches came together and their youth was taking food and supplies up to the, but it's one story after the other. And then as my son went, got on his bike on the beach yesterday and he rode from, he lives in Ormond Beachside, he ran, he went from Ormond to Krabby Joe's, and he sent pictures and I had them posted. It is absolutely the saddest thing I've ever seen, what's happened to our beaches and the homes and the condos, and financially, what this is going to, the impact. You know, just the two buildings that we just mentioned, White Surf and Hawaiian Inn, you know, they're off the tax roll, you know, as far as, you know, they're not going to be having any revenue coming in. They're going to be gone, I think. And I saw them and they're, it's just amazing. So I just want to thank everybody for their patience in getting their power back. I'm still making some phone calls. I've had some really good connections with Florida Power, so I've been able to call them for probably a dozen of situations that they were able to help me. Keet Street, oh my gosh, yeah, I just, you know, so I am concerned about, we have Keet Street and City Island libraries that are, we can't get to. So those folks, you know, where are they going to go? Where, where can they go for their FEMA assistance, you know, information or filling out their applications? There's just so many needs. Again, please, everybody, be patient and understand, no matter how bad it is, there's somebody else that's got it even worse, maybe. And when we're having so many complaints on just the Florida Power, we've got, and I did go over to the Ocean Center, and by the way, thank you to all the staff and everybody that's there working so hard. They had that so well organized. It was just amazing. Just thank you to everybody. Please be patient. We understand what you're going through. Our hearts, each one of us up here, I know, are very passionate about our districts, and it's heart-wrenching for us to see it from one area to the other. It's so, and Beachside got hit really, really, really bad. And I live in the shores and that's why I talk to Cyrus, because he's on the beach. And it's just, it's just a sad awakening that, by golly, when we get a weather report, you better hunker down, you know? I was so fortunate, I didn't have a drop of water in my unit, nor did I have the power off, but I've sure heard the stories and seen season visual. Again, thank you, thank you to the staff and all the department heads. I hated to even have you here today because I know where you really needed, but thank you so much.
You're fine. Barbara Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I guess, just a couple of things I wanted to mention. In cooperation with Commissioner Jessica Davis, the Greater Union Church received a semi of supplies yesterday. And it was a pastor, Charlie Coker, his ministries, I guess he had some access, and it was, it was a great opportunity to be able to serve the community and, and work with the clergy because most of the clergy came out to help their residents and their, and their members. So that was a great opportunity. There's another organization that is donating 100 meals, and I've reached out to several of our small businesses, small restaurants, and they're going to split them amongst themselves and, and provide those meals to those that, again, don't get the SNAP services. I think it's those that Donna was speaking of where they don't have access, they've lost their food, and it's an opportunity, again, to feed the family, but it's also an opportunity to support small business that's been, that hasn't been able to serve people for the last, probably close to a week now. So it's going to be a win-win-win. What I've also asked is that when those residents come, that they are also provided whatever current information is available. So they'll be able to green whatever access to resources about the libraries and about any access to help. I also visited the Ocean Center shelter and met and talked with a number of the residents that were there, and although they were going through challenges, they were actually in good spirits, you know, and, and feeling good about the support, the staff and the resources that were being provided there. So I know it's, it's a hard time, but I, I guess when I look at Fort Myers and those areas, I know it could have been a lot worse. So just grateful, and that's why I attended last night the Land Commission to let them know. I'm just appreciative of all the collaboration and support that we've been able to give, to give each other, and the responsiveness and the responsibility that people have shown through this challenging time. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Ben had to leave. He got a call. The river is still rising and it was endangering his brother's home, so he was going to check on that. Dr. Lowery likewise had an emergency related to the storm, and so he had to leave, which brings us to Heather Post.
Well, I think we've, I would just reiterate everything that everyone else has said about the storm and, and staff. I know in speaking with the mayor of Daytona, he was very concerned about people that had been displaced, and so opening up the Ocean Center was a huge, huge relief, I know, to that city and, and others for sure. FPNL has been just amazing as usual in responding to every single request and then actually getting it done. So very thankful there, but just across the board, very thankful to everyone that was so responsive and that answered questions and answered calls during, during, before and after the storm. And I tell you, this, I've weathered a lot of hurricanes. I've basically worked every hurricane from 92 to now. I think I missed one right before campaigning, but I've worked every hurricane, and I'll tell you, this, other than driving down to Andrew and seeing the aftermath, this, being in it, this was the, just the most surprising to me with, in terms of flooding. I was just, the wind not so much, but, and even the rain, but the flooding was just, I'm still blown away by, by how much flooding we've gotten and how many of our homes across the county, not just in one specific area, were underwater. So I do want to stress, if there is anyone that needs any assistance that has had their homes flooded, to please contact us. Please go on volusia.org and, and look at the, the resources that are available. There are resources. If, if you need further resources or you have no idea where to turn, please reach out because we definitely can connect you and, and help you there. So, but I want to thank, my husband worked at the Bearcat, it's one of the high rest, or high water vehicles during the storm, and he was in waist-deep, chest-deep water most of the time. And I'm obviously very proud of him, but certainly very proud of all the first responders. Very grateful that the National Guard came in and helped in our county as well. I believe he ran into your son, actually. Yeah. But super grateful to everyone that has come out and helped, and hopefully we'll get through this. But it, I want everybody to understand because after every storm, I'm also amazed that people just jump back into, they're out on the roads immediately, and we're, we're always saying, stop, go back in your houses. And everybody just wants to get back to normalcy and, but sometimes you really just need to understand that there, there are quite a few people that are not back to normal, will not get back to normal anytime soon, and we definitely need to, to dote on them and make sure they have what they need.
That's a very good point. And to that, too, many utility workers out in the right of ways, I know they're wrapping up, but we will have crews, others will have crews out in these areas so people could slow down. There is a lot of traffic out there and it does get difficult to work and, so just be patient, help your neighbor kind of thing by slowing down.
And a lot of people behind the scenes that work. Very, very thankful. Thank you.
Danny Robbins.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to give props to everybody, this council, staff for being really accessible. I've had zero issues with getting hold of any one of y'all, and I don't even have to follow up, but that's standard. 365 days a year, I haven't experienced anything less than that. District 3 is very fortunate. Our cities, our mayors, our leadership down there, combined with, with this council, there's not a whole lot that we can't handle. It's probably the lowest consistent part of Volusia County, but everybody fared well for, for the most part. We do have a couple issues in some very low areas, but for the most part, I'm proud of everybody, our law enforcement, all of our first responders, our linemen. I know that we had, I saw it on news break, I don't know if we have any information, there was a City of New Smyrna Beach utility worker that was electrocuted and another utility worker, I want to say it was FBL. I don't know if we have any updates on them or not, but they were transported, but for the most part, you know, I just continue, there's nothing out here that's really worth your life. You know, we had somebody that was trying to drain their pool, and with unofficial reports of Pond Inlet 31 inches, you know, rise there or rainfall, there's, there's nothing worth that or no property worth your life. A lot of things can be rebuilt and a lot of things can be replaced. Your life can't. A lot of things can be rebuilt and a lot of things can be replaced, your life can't. So everyone just remain to be careful. There's still some issues out there, electrical issues, just keep that in mind and stay safe. And, and thank you guys for, for working together in such a manner and providing the services that our people pay for. Thank you in a top notch manner. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll try and be quick because I'm just going to be repeating what everybody else said. But I, I want to join the rest of the council in just congratulating our first responders to begin with. They, you know, somebody already told the story, the event of the woman that died on, on the beach. Storm was still going on at that time and she was standing on a sand dune that just gave away. It's during the storm, there's no lifeguard there, but fortunately there was firefighters nearby. And they went in after her, fully clothed, and actually reached her and got her to shore, had a pulse. And the waves just crashed in and pulled them all out to sea again. And they lost the woman. You've never been, they, they found her 20 minutes later, which is too late. If you've never been a first responder, you don't really know how that affects people. They deal with it, they have to. They deal with the death, they deal with the loss of life, but it, it affects you. And they put their lives on the line to save that life. And I, I just wanted to call them out. My, I have two sons in the National Guard, one was sent to Osceola. And then they sent him to Port Orange where he ran into your husband for all the, all the flooding there. I would wager to guess, staff to my right might know, but I, I bet we're approaching a thousand, maybe more of, of water rescues from law enforcement, lifeguards, everybody. This has been a flooding event. We said that it would be, it exceeded our expectations unfortunately. The EMS people, the corrections, everybody that I've seen has just gone way above and beyond the call of duty. I'm, I'm, I'm just really proud of our first responders. Staff, you know, what can you, I spent a lot of time at the EOC because I had no, I had no electricity at my house, I had no cell service. So I, I went, so I could continue to talk with the public, charged batteries, not mine, but on my computers. And as I just watched the staff, it was an amazing thing to see, not just the professionalism, but the compassion that they had and the readiness and the preparedness that, that just seemed to come so natural for them. Kevin, there's a reason why you had a great increase in people going to volusia.org. It was the quality of the information that you put out. I, I sat in that little, little space that you, I, I think you had six people in there. Information's coming in by the second and they're processing it. Again, the professionalism and the compassion that you could hear as they talk back and forth, how do we deal with this, creating graphics on the, on the fly so that it actually made sense to the public and then getting it posted. I mean, over and over and over again. It was, you, you just did an amazing job, your staff, and, and they need to be. All the way down to, I, I sent a letter to Tim Bailey back there and to the county manager yesterday for employees in parks and recreation. Yeah, they had a role too. One, one of your employees that I came across, Chris, is it Leesick, Lessick? At the, at the Osteen Civic Center. I always laugh when I call it a civic center. It's a great community location. He was there to open it up for people to get food. I, I called Suzanne about food and within minutes she had the Salvation Army. You probably already had it planned out. And that's the other thing, you call staff and they make you, they make you feel like you're the only person in, in the world that they're dealing with. They just took care of all of our needs. But Chris didn't just open up the building, he was helping us to load sandbags in people's trucks, load, pack up food, put it on boats, because a lot of the people down there are stranded. They can't get to the food. So we, there was actually a mosquito control airboat across the, the street at the county barn. And they were pressed into surface, service gladly. And we loaded all the food on their airboat and they took it down to the Maytown area, places where, it, it was just, the whole thing was just the, the way everybody worked together. And the same for the public. I've seen, I've seen the public come together, help neighbors. I'm sure there's been issues out there. In fact, we, we drove through the water in a high lift at Lemon Bluff Boat Ramp. And at first, we were bringing food and at first the, and, and sandbags. The first neighbor was not glad to see us. He said, would you please stay out of our, out of our neighborhood? And that's the message that I want the public to hear. These flooded areas, please don't drive there because every, it's, there's, sometimes it's inches or just a few feet away from their home. And when you drive in there and create wake, it's going right through their doors. And the fear of, of people coming, you know, to, to take things that aren't there. So he apologized once he knew what, what we were there for, accepted food, got more sandbags. But just watching the, the public in different places, how they, how they pulled together, it was amazing. So lastly, just again, I, I want to, I want to stress the danger. We're not, this is not done. You go outside, it's beautiful, the temperature's nice, I wore my fall tie today. But the water's still rising. The St. John's, all that water from the south is coming up to us. My property was completely flooded. Six hours later, it was drained. It's because the county maintains a, a nice deep stormwater ditch in front of it. All that water goes out to the St. John's. And then I was watching it go, go downstream or upstream in, in, in Osteen. The water is still rising, people are still in danger. We need to, we need to continue to help each other. We need to slow down, as was just said, stay out of these flooded areas that causes more damage. And please, the beach is my favorite place. It's not safe right now. The dunes are not stable. There are still buildings that will collapse into the ocean. There's, there's so much debris in the water. Billy, you might have seen it, Mike Springer showed me the video of part of, of Krabby's, the, I, I think the, the shack where you get bait and stuff. Watched it fall into the ocean. It's all out there somewhere. It's not safe. So please, this is a smart community, use good sense. And we're, we're doing everything possible. Staff is working around the clock, they, they really are. And first responders are working around the clock. We'll, we'll get through it, but it's not going to be done by this weekend. It's still happening and it's going to take a while to get cleaned up. That's going to take a, a long time to get cleaned up and, and to rebuild. There's a lot of rebuilding to do. Let's come together, let's help each other, let's be kind to one another. And, and we'll deal with the lessons that we need to learn with that in, in subsequent meetings. Right now, I, I just want to say thank you to county staff. Thank you especially to the, to law enforcement, EMS, firefighters, correction, all of our first responders.
Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, can I just ask one thing? How much longer are they expecting for the, the rise?
Well, that's been a little bit of a moving target, but last I heard was Thursday into land. So it varies up and down the river. But an aster, I think it's already crushed.
That's a good question.
Don't forget public work and all that for first responders as well, yeah. I always feel bad. But there, there are, what, what's the motto? First to respond, last to die.
I can't tell you how many times I emailed or texted Ben or, or called him. And you know, some of the questions, you know, what are you guys doing to stop this water? Well, there's, you know, but he would answer kindly. And I'm really not making fun, it's, it's, people were, were panicked when they're seeing their, everything they worked for, for their whole lives be washed away or their houses fill up. On a sad note and a good note, we have a lot to deal with. My other son in the National Guard was sent to ground zero below Fort Myers. He spent his first two days going into homes that were completely, completely flooded to the ceiling, where whole families were trapped and had to be taken out. They weren't alive anymore. So I'll, you know, we've had, I think, five confirmed deaths related to the storm. That's too many, but we're blessed that that's how much it was. The damage we can deal with, the human lives you can't replace. So good job to everybody in here. Thank you to the public. And with that, George, I told you we'd be done by noon. It was your fault.
I'll take that one, you're right.
2:53. Thank you all for the county, the staff that bring, brought us your report. 2:53, we will adjourn. Everybody's done. Thank you.